I thought she was.
Yeah.
Maybe she got tied up with something.
I just about didn't show up, it's a good idea.
I had a panic moment as our sitter was a little late because she had to drop her siblings off and my husband was at the bin site so I couldn't like leave. I was like, oh my god, did it start at eight thirty? Oh my god, I had a slight panic.
Uh, I think we usually start at nine.
Just recording now, just to let you know.
Yeah, slight panic.
Jean needs to know that so he doesn't say anything inappropriate.
Can Rick hear us? Like, I'm worried he can't hear us.
I don't know, can he hear?
Rick, can you hear us? Rick?
I don't know, well, this is gonna work. Disconnected.
Is he still on?
The recorder's on. We're not sure where it can hear us.
I can hear you.
Oh, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, perfect.
I probably hear he better than us. All right. Nine oh one, I'll call this special meeting of the Mercy County Commission to order. Um, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Okay, I'm gonna turn you so that you can.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, motion by Jamie to approve the agenda as presented, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Jean, in the discussion. Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Rick, can you hear us?
Barely now.
Oh, shoot.
We're just, uh, motion to approve the agenda. Are you in favor? Motion to approve the agenda, up to you to say aye or nay.
I would say aye.
Okay, I'll say aye as well, that motion passes.
I have my agenda working.
Okay.
It didn't change.
Didn't change. Uh, just for everybody that would watch the video later, we got Rick on Zoom attending. Otherwise, that's what we got, so landfill's gonna be in here at nine ten. Um, any questions, um, from the commissioners at this point? Um, you know, we can kinda, the whole meeting is about the agenda, about the budget, so. If there's any questions between time slots, um, we can bring those up.
I don't have any yet.
Nothing yet.
Yeah, nothing yet. Um, actually, like, one, is the nine oh one portion since that went to the sheriff's office now, is that supposed to be?
Here's the thing with that.
I was wondering if you had kinda done it because we were, it was a transition period.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, sixty thousand of the nine one goes to the sheriff's office, which Terry's aware of.
Right.
For the position, but there's still equipment. We've got equipment that has to be paid out, those nine one funds are designated strictly for nine one.
Okay.
So, yeah, this is a transition year.
I just assumed you were, you were helping because of the transition.
And I'm keeping track of it all, but that's the thing, the state, not NDACO is gonna take that siren payment, those nine one fees. That's a big part of that budget, we pay to the state for the siren, we pay to the state for, uh, nine oh one revenues of their portion.
Okay.
What they're gonna do is take it over, so then we don't have to make those payments. They're going to get that done, make sure they're accurate, because they found that some companies aren't paying the counties like they should. And then just give us the revenues from our nine one, and that's all we have to deal with, so it's really gonna cut down.
Okay.
And then next year, yeah, Terry and I will decide.
Worked.
How we're gonna do that.
I just assumed it was a transition.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
But Terry is definitely getting his portion for the nine one coordinator.
Yeah.
Everything that has to do with his employees, nine one work, yes.
So the state is making a change?
No, NDACO is going to, see this, the revenues that we get from all the different entities, the cell companies. They collect the monies and they have to pay, like West River, that dollar. That goes back to the nine one fund, and that's how the nine one fund and all the nine one equipment and everything that was paid for was through the nine one fee on your cellphone. But they take a five percent off of that, and what they're gonna do is simplify it, because now we get all those revenues in. And then I have to take them all, take a portion of them, send it to the treasurer's office for the siren, fifty cents of that dollar dividend that we're now charged goes to the state. We're still only at a dollar. Then ten percent of that.
Tomorrow I'll write it.
Ten percent of that has to go to NDACO to pay for maintaining the towers for the nine one system throughout the states.
It's a lot of, that's my.
That's your fund, scratch pile, that's what she said.
Yeah, but they will be coming and talking to every commission, and it's like a joint powers. They definitely, and that's over the next year, they'll be doing that.
All right.
Candy's here.
Candy's here, we can talk about the landfill budgets. Um, let's see. I think in our packet, it's fund six thousand one. This should be the first sheet on here, on the packet.
What'd you say, Travis?
County landfill, fund six thousand one.
Okay, in here. Uh, the landfill, we have, um. Line item three eighty-eight payments to contractors, hundred eighty thousand, what is?
I'm assuming that's capping. Yeah, sorry.
Line.
Line three, three eighty-eight payments to contractors, hundred eighty thousand, I'm assuming that's for capping.
Yes.
Okay.
It's, yeah.
Okay, so that hundred and eighty, does that come out of a fund? That we already have money in?
Yes, it will come out of the operational fund.
Yes, yep.
And at this time, it's got two, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in it.
Yes.
And this, that is just a rough estimate on what that's gonna cost. And I guess another thing I, um. About getting permission, because we'll have to get, um, Houston Engineering to come over there. And figure out exactly how much that we need to cap to be in compliance. And then he does the figuring for the contractors, or you know how much dirt's gotta be moved in, that to make a bid thing.
W- were you gonna do any of it this year, or?
No, it can't be done this year.
Can't be done this year, okay, gotcha. I just know when we talked like this last one.
And hopefully, we could maybe do this in the spring of twenty twenty-four, if we can get good bids.
Okay, so the plan would be to start the bidding process this fall?
Yep, just whenever we can get everything lined up and then see if we get some numbers in here and see what we get.
Okay.
And hopefully be able to do it in twenty twenty-four spring.
So how do we? Account for, because that money gets moved in, right? So it'll be like a transfer in or something?
No, this is a, this is an enterprise fund, so there's no money transferred in or out of the enterprise fund. We had it budgeted, it's self-sustaining, so there's nothing that's brought in or out, it's all based off of fees collected. For the landfill, landfill in specific.
Yep, yep, but it's still in a separate fund where money's gonna get moved in here.
No, the money's in there.
Yeah.
Right. But it's not in?
The money's in the operational fund.
And what is it in? Is it in fund six thousand one?
Yeah, everything that happens within the landfill stays in that fund.
In that fund alone.
Yeah.
But there's three different things.
And you got a sub, kind of sub-fund or something in there, category, huh? Okay, never mind.
Yeah, but, um, just looking at the other portion here, the revenue side, um.
If you're looking for first thing, you gotta go to six oh oh one right at the back.
That's in the back one?
Yeah. It's one of the last ones.
Yeah, page seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
Or something else.
Yeah.
Right, nope, that's it. It's way in the back.
Yes.
And then the sheet, this sheet shows all of her expenses, everything that comes out of there, and then. I head on your transfer from general fund is not, if anything comes, yeah, three separate accounts so that we can track it better. Operating is for operating, and just tell me if I'm wrong, Candy, but we want that post-closure, that is something that has to be there, those monies absolutely.
Yeah, that's in, that's in the permit, and that's the money for the insurance. You know, once you cap something, there's the insurance line that we've released fifteen years after you cap an area. And then this is, it just kinda keeps going. And that's what, and you know, ninety-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, eighty-seven cents, and that post closure, that money can never be touched. It's, it's gotta be added to, eight thousand goes in them every year.
Okay.
And that just stays there, it has to be there. It's financial insurance stuff.
And then, um, on the revenue side, we have half a million, when did we change the rates, was that this year? But I mean, we changed that in twenty-three, that went effective this year?
It was the first of the year, yeah.
Okay, so that should, based on our average tonnage that we get, that's how you figure out the half a million?
Actually, um, the tonnage that's kept track of is the MSW.
Okay.
Only, the wood.
The inert stuff is not?
The inert and the wood and that isn't put on there, it's the MSW that we cannot go over twenty tons per day calendar year. And if you notice when I turn in my sheets and things on the deal, like, I've got like twenty-four ton on there, well. Another month, I might only have fifteen ton on there, so it averages off the year, and we're about average sixteen, seventeen ton per year on the MSW alone. And that's all the states.
Concerned about.
Concerned about.
That's that rule. The inert and the rest of it's different.
No cap on tonnage that you can take for inert?
Uh, well, no, not really.
Okay.
It's just as far as space goes, you know? Because there is no future plan, once this area we're in for the inert, there is no future plan, then we're down next to it. But it's still gonna be there when I leave, so.
Okay. Yeah. I, I know some cities I work with, they have their own inert, they're a little bit easier to permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, see, that doesn't have to have to be that ponder or whatever on that either, money and all.
Okay.
Carmen? Carmen?
Put it on here.
Yes.
On the transfer in from general fund?
Right, that's wrong.
That's wrong?
Yeah, just take off the general fund, just cross off the general fund.
Just transfer in, yeah.
It's just a transfer in from her operational account.
Oh, from.
But I'm telling you, after we do all this editing, you know, whatever you do, then we're gonna go back through, I'm gonna go back through, and I'm gonna redo this book. This book with the evaluation, that we got the true evaluation now, but I wanna do all this editing first, and then Dawn and I and Lynn are gonna go through to make sure that I didn't miss anything, and that everybody's understanding, then, I believe on the second, I'll put it toward the end of the meeting, so then we can go through this.
Yep, we understand, we know that's, that's all, what this is all part of, yeah.
I know, Rick, I'm just letting you know that's the sheet, so this is not.
And then also, we have another request on, okay, put those filter socks, and I had that, that fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars from those filter socks for that fine.
Uh-huh.
Well, that money went into my op, or into the landfill account, like money cash on hand. And in between that, and when I sell the steel, when they bail it, and, and then also the stuff that I take to Bismarck, you know, the copper and different stuff that we collect, and I get checks for that. I would like to have, you guys would have to make a motion for her to do this, but have that money instead of going into the the cash on hand or whatever account, and be putting that in the operational fund. Because prior to this, prior to me, all of that stuff was given away, and so that money was never on there.
Oh, it never stayed in the landfill account?
Well, it was never sold.
It was given away.
It was never sold.
Oh, got you, got you.
Yeah, she's been taking it.
I gave money for it, because I didn't give it away.
Okay.
Right.
Then you'll have to. You'll have to bring that in a different meeting, that we make that change.
Yeah, that could be on the next meeting agenda.
Maybe we have to do that today.
Yeah, yeah, just because we're in a special meeting.
But it's a request.
Yeah.
Yep, no.
No, and I think.
Put it on the calendar, please, if you would, Carmen.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Now, your honor, turn, I have it on the agenda, it sounds like it will be.
Okay. And then also, should I put on there too, to get on the agenda, to get permission to get Sherwin on the docket to start looking into this project?
Yeah, I'd have that on the agenda too.
A meeting group?
Yeah, yeah.
Here, here, we're only talking your budget.
Okay.
No.
But you can bring in.
But I'm trying to explain my numbers on what they're.
Yep, not a problem. Yep, understood, Candy. And then, uh. Lease of, be a lease purchase of equipment, you got thirty grand. You haven't had to buy any lately?
No.
Okay. As I see you could get.
No, and actually, with, with that, the future, the leasing and that, there's both thirty grand on there, and that money's been trimming outside of, that's in there soon if, like, if I had a major breakdown. Because to be honest with you guys, if either one of my machines are good machines or old, but if a motor or transmission went out, either one of them, I would opt to be putting another motor or transmission in. Outside of getting another, because these aren't deaf, and they're not as complicated as the other ones.
Yeah.
And they're built in, I mean, they have cosmetics, but I mean, otherwise.
It's a landfill, right.
I would not be going after, uh.
So based on, well, in fills expenses and income, they can still self-sustain? Did I miss that word?
Self-sufficient, yes.
Well, as of June thirtieth, on the cash on hand, there's two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and four cents on cash at the end of June thirtieth. And at the end of June thirtieth so far, not that one, um, we've only used twenty-four percent of our budget.
But we had budgeted for closure too.
Uh, not last year, we didn't.
Well, it says in the twenty-three budget, we had a hundred and eighty thousand budgeted.
Uh, I think it is thirty thousand on my paper, or wait, a hundred and eighty up there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Payment to contractors, oh, okay.
So, yeah, that's why I'm, I, I, I think last year, we talked about having a capping project, but.
Yeah.
If, if it's not gonna happen this year, that's fine, I mean, because it's just part of this year's budget, but what I'm getting to is that we had budgeted for it, so if we start Sherwin on anything, it's already in twenty-three's budget, that he can start the engineering.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and then if we just put that hundred and eighty into twenty-four's, we're not really creating anything, we're just earmarking it, knowing that we're gonna have post, or we're gonna have closure acres in twenty-four.
Are you talking about the capping, right?
The capping, yeah. Wrong word, I guess, should be capping. I was gonna say post-closure, but I'm like, that's not post-closure. Gotta use the right terminology. Any other?
In.
Questions?
Is that, uh?
Put something aside.
That would be what we best different transfer.
Thank you, Rick, but she said that's where that was coming from. She said this hundred and eighty was coming from.
Okay, we're okay with these numbers?
Yes.
I'm gonna go back through there.
I'm just asking Carmen about the.
The worksheet one?
Estimated fund balance on your, and the North Dakota landfill fund six oh one, page seventy-one.
Right before you're, the one you're looking at, the page right before.
Page seventy-one.
Yep.
Yeah, I wonder if I throw that in my mouse here, about the one twenty-eight, five eighty-seven dot six six at the bottom.
And that was where we came, that transfer in, but it would come from general fund, it would come from her operations funds to cover that extra.
Okay.
And then I know there was like.
It's not an actual transfer in. But you said the operational.
No, it's not, but according to that, you have to have a heat balance, you can't have.
So it just show up somewhere else on the sheet, not in the.
Actually, the second sheet, you'll be able to see where.
So Travis, since you did say closure, that's what, like, line?
Nine eighteen.
Nine eighteen, which, they said the operational fund, but this says operational closure.
So you'd have to.
Which isn't that the fund we need to leave sit there for?
That, so like the operational closure fund, like, if for whatever reason we got shut down, we have to have money in there to.
Right.
Cover everything.
Right.
Um. That, that's the fund.
But that, that page closure, if that's the money you gotta have. Or if they shut the landfill down, because that, I mean, that, they, because they will, because they give you death tolls well, then you don't.
So that nine eight, the line nine eighteen, that's the one that has to stay there, or that's the one that you can use to?
That's gotta stay there.
That's what I, that's what I thought too, but.
The added.
So where did you say that hundred and eighty was coming from up in line?
I think it's for payments to contractors.
That would come out of the operational closure.
So that one does come, okay, that's, that's.
And that one, you can, you can use that, and that's, that fund needs to keep being built in there also for future, it's supposed to be.
Future project.
So future, okay.
Once we do this capping, and then there's still gonna be more that have to be capped down the road.
So the capping is part of this, or it can be used as a phase for part of capping?
No, you can't use the page closure at all, that's for, like, your insurance.
Where, see, page closure is the next one up ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a different account. And that's the one that's got the ninety-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Let's see, our payment to page closure.
Only says eight thousand.
We put eight thousand in that.
Every year.
But it doesn't show a balance of what we actually have in there?
No, this is just.
The balance in the post closure is, is ninety-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-four eighty-seven, and that's actually, the Sherwin would have to explain this for her again, that was all explained to.
Shanna.
Shanna, but, uh. That. The eight thousand could end up being more money being put in there because of the cost of living and the cost of stuff.
So it may need to be increased at some point.
Like, they might raise it two percent this year, or a percent or something, and then the transfer. So that number changes, but we, I think we got this up last year, when we put, or in twenty twenty-one, we put that sixty thousand instead of the thirty in the operational. We put sixty thousand in there to bring this money up to what it is supposed to be saying up to eight.
So we can't use the money in nine sixteen, but we can use the money in nine seventeen.
I think you go down one line.
Right.
Oh, sorry.
Sixteen and seventeen, or seventeen and eighteen.
I'm sorry, nine seventeen, don't touch.
Yeah.
Nine eighteen is something that we can use.
Yeah, and that's for the capping.
Correct? Cap.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So when I said closure, I was correct?
You were, but then it created a whole new, like, questions.
And we still need to be putting thirty thousand, or if we can put more back in that operational, that is a very good idea.
Right, because we're gonna continue to need to utilize it.
Because you're gonna be needing it, it's gonna be needed in the future.
And that's a, that's a year-end transfer, that we would put it into the operational closure, whatever is left.
No, it's in the operational closure.
No, but I mean, if we have, if we have additional, like, because you have additional revenue.
If it was additional, at any time, we could put it in there.
Yeah.
Or, and that's why I kinda like my steel stuff, could even put in there, and also that fifty-two thousand dollars I went to in there, because I'm not gonna bring that number up.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And I think that's where that money should go, because it wasn't, it was unforeseen money.
Right.
Un-budgeted revenue, basically, which is always welcome.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So we had, right, it was just rich, rich, just seemed. When I could get her out, because we couldn't see a balance on it, so.
Which we don't usually look at balances, we just look at individual years.
You got that one?
Okay.
Wrong writer indifferent.
Right, but I think that's what you're beyond, so.
Yeah, she, she was talking in a week or two.
Okay. Jean, anything on landfill?
No.
Okay.
I isn't.
Good.
Jamie? I'm good, Candy, anything else?
I don't think so.
And we'll get you on the agenda for the next meeting to talk about the. Uh, it's the second, is that sound right? Yeah. Next Wednesday.
Yeah, next Wednesday.
Yeah.
There you go, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
August second.
Not tomorrow.
Okay, yeah. I'm maybe on the course, I'm just trying to. Okay.
Okay.
So we're all good?
I think we're good.
I think so.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, Candy.
You guys have a good day.
Thank you.
You too.
Bye, Candy. Travis and Jean, just when we get to it, page eighteen and nineteen is in between pages forty-two and forty-three.
Okay, we don't go by part, we go by fund accounts, account numbers.
Agreed, but Liza's packet is correct in page order number, but us three, it's different.
It might be correct to a certain point, but I don't think they are. That's why I go by funds.
Yeah, I'm not really worried about.
Mine, yeah, mine's got eighteen back there.
Trying to get that.
But, yeah, she went to correct the number, but I didn't realize that until I took it out. But I was going by funds, because it was just easier for me to find them.
Okay. Uh, sheriff's budget. Come on up.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioner, this is Greg R. Berg. Good morning, Terry.
Good morning. We got Rick on Zoom.
I see him. I don't know if he can hear us. Right, please.
Yeah. If he, if he, uh, falls asleep, we'll just send some shock through there or something.
I can't read his facial expressions though, so.
Public safety, yeah, should be public safety is the. Do you got a page number on that?
Okay, in the general, the first. Okay, so reimbursements on the revenues with, into governmental revenues, it'll show sheriffs, but, but their expenses. Under, um, yeah, he's under public safety, but the thing is, you wanna look at the sheet I gave you. This is the one that expands it, so you can see everything, we're in the gen, it just puts it all together here on page seven.
Yep.
Page seven here, and I got this here.
Yes, and that's the one that has a.
Where we can take that apart. You guys will see that it's different from last year, we combined all our sub-budgets, I call them, to make this simpler. You know, there was a reason, I guess, we did that years ago for grant purposes, but it was all like the task force and the, that was all sheriff's department budget, so. With them being out of the way and far enough in the background, we don't have to do that anymore, we combined them to one budget, so you won't see a task force budget, you won't see a uh, youth bureau budget, you'll just see the sheriff's department budget, and not in one budget, that's all one budget under public safety. And Carmen and I did that for, making it simple, so we can understand this going forward, so. So some of them numbers, they looks like they went through the roof, it's not, it's, we combined all three into one, so you'll have one big sheet. But, uh, I guess my main issues are just to point out, and I've, I've went through this with, uh, my portfolio, older Rick also is aware of it, the seventy-five thousand dollars, you'll see that line item, that's for the siren portables, that we've been talking about the siren radio project forever, we gotta finalize that sooner or later, so.
That's line four sixty-one, radio equipment?
Yep, that's a big change, like I say, the, the line items before that are all from combining them three and then seeing what we operated with last year and, and, and coming out pretty close. So there's no big changes really that would be notable.
Line four twenty-nine jail expenses, it looks like is the same that we have budgeted this year, year to date, we're just over half, so that seems like that's pretty good.
Yes. And you, and you can see as we said, that, uh, that's what we looked at, I think we were pretty close with our numbers coming in with our revenues to the federal inmate program to what the jail expenses are. There's some of them line items, again, are skewed, they say prisoner, prisoner medical or stuff like that, it's all being reimbursed by the federal government when it comes to the feds, so. How do we track that money coming in? How do we track that money coming in?
And everything is marked, so I'm watching it. Okay, so like on the side, you'll see, okay, so you got Oliver fees. Okay, on the side of here, I put his revenues. And I estimated for twenty-four, so you got Oliver dispatch fee is forty thousand, but. Thirty of that is for the nine-one and another thirty, so sixty thousand will come out of the nine-one funds. And that's for that nine-one coordinator position, and then all the other equipment is gonna get paid out of there directly. Fifty thousand is an estimate of what the law enforcement brings in every year from these city contracts they have. And then miscellaneous fees that the sheriff has brought in, we estimated about forty-six thousand eight hundred coming in. And then now the inmate housing, I believe that's a low estimate, but I went low.
It's gonna be, yeah.
So it's, it's at least two hundred, four hundred and seventy thousand, or three, two hundred and seventy.
Guys' budgeting purposes, she came in really low and I agree with that. But I can say for all our fees, our, our fees coming back to the general fund that, again, don't go back into our budget, we pay out, but don't come back. They go into your general fund, it's gonna be well over a half million dollars.
Okay, and just note that total down there is wrong.
Yeah.
Cause adding up, you got at least a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifty, sorry.
Yeah, it, it'll be well over, it'll be well over five hundred thousand for our fees.
Half a million, so.
But again, going forward, that's, I, I guess them, them numbers are for you guys to consider. My, my other, some of my other change requests are for the grant match money nine seventy. Carmen and I put fifteen thousand dollars in there and with Rick's approval, our, that's to change our vests. Our, our bulletproof vests, and half of that, if it's spent, it won't reflect on here, but half will come back through a federal match. Fifty percent of that fifteen will come back, but, so. And that's replacing, I think they, they changed the program this year that we can only, what, six at a time? So, so if we replace six, of course, that whole number wouldn't be used anyway. But what we do use, if half of that would be come back, so that's a request that you didn't see last year. I think that's self-explanatory, I wouldn't argue why I'd need that.
So the travel and the per diem one, is that just you anticipate like more training for the officers or?
Which, which number are you?
Three forty-one.
Three forty-one.
Three forty-one. Yes, and again, there, there's one of the numbers that are skewed, because now we, remember we added the youth bureau and the task force. So we added all three training.
Okay.
And our traveling per diem numbers together, so that's what we, from last year, that's what we come up for this year.
Gotcha.
So, yeah.
And then, is that why the telephone one is different too then? Because it's like the youth bureau service and the task force? Okay.
So you, you'll see that, we, they're all, they all came to one, so if you got something that looks like it was. Jumped, you have to look, from last year jumped, it really hasn't, you just gotta look at, we combined all three.
Uh, new vehicles, six sixty-one?
Yes, the, uh.
Are you getting?
I, I think we gotta fix some funds and maybe Carmen can help with that, what I'm requesting, we got two coming that we haven't been able to get.
Right.
I don't know, I'm hoping this fall, and if we can, we'll get them paid for before coming into next year, but if we don't, that money would have to be rolled. But, you know, ti- time marches on, I, I'm, for my fleet, I'm asking next year for additional two vehicles. Even though we haven't received the two we're supposed to get. I'm hoping it don't drag on long enough till I have to replace the whole fleet at the same time. But, so, that one fifty-five, that's where we're asking for two vehicles, and you can see the price jump in what a vehicle costs. Now, or looking forward to the next year than what it was this year, I mean, it's up fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars easy for each vehicle. But that's what I'm asking for next year, is two, two additional vehicles for our fleet.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not knocking that down, I'm just saying that we're expecting two this year, if they don't get it here this year.
Expecting two, I want two.
So it's potentially four.
I think we have to fix a, Carmen wrote me a note that she's gonna, I suspect, help me with it. Fix a, a line item number or a budget number for that, so we don't lose the money going forward.
You already have the fund, we actually got it yesterday, and on the second page of your budget, at the bottom. We're gonna transfer the seventy-two thousand five twenty, if you don't use it, and the fifty thousand, we all go to sheriff's vehicle funds. And then that way you will keep it.
Yeah.
And then you can use.
And hopefully, like I say, we don't wait in the next year for the two vehicles this year. That's what I'm requesting for next year, is two vehicles, if, if, if and when all four would come in, I, I need to make. Uh, I need to have you guys look at replacing one of the youth bureau vehicles. As we, we run two there, but what I would do there, I'm not making a budget request for that, because my plan is if I get four new ones in, I'll have four old ones to sell. And we'd go down in the lot, and it don't have to be a place, we'd go down in the lot and find a youth bureau worker, something like. Uh, Rachel has now got a little Ford, something that's economical, you know, a little CRV, something like that, good in gas mileage. That, that's how we pay for that.
Cause the only thing it has to be equipped with is a radio.
A radio, yes. And, like you said, that's why I haven't made a budget request for that, but that would be, you know, between you guys. I'll come in and request that at the time when them funds would come in from selling them vehicles to reappropriate that.
Yeah, and that's easy enough for us to do within the year.
My, my other big requests are, and I, I, I know that I've talked to Carmen about it, I don't know where we're at with it. But I really need to have the commission consider the first public safety program for my office.
Yeah.
That's a point nine seven percent difference, and it's gonna be for a retention thing for me, you know, it'd be huge.
Did, uh.
Know what the cost is on that.
Cause it's for correctional officers and law enforcement.
And law enforcement, anybody who would work more than half time in, in the jail or the law enforcement. Carmen and I only have some software issues with that, but that's her.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Problem, yeah.
Yeah, I, I really need the first public safety program. Keep me in the ballgame with recruitment and retention is all I'm asking the commission.
Recording in progress.
Is, um, does that have to be in place to the?
You know, it's, it's coming up for the new year, the association of counties is telling me that we have to come into twenty-four.
With it.
I say we have to have it prior to that, don't we?
Yeah, I think, no?
I just, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna ask you because I know you were gonna call. I just talked to Pers the other day, and we can join at any month, as long as it's the first of any month.
Okay.
There's no deadline.
No, but I mean.
For them to get the law enforcement, cause I had heard that that was going to have a deadline to it and that it would be coming up soon.
Twenty twenty-five.
Well, I, I have, I have the association of counties people telling me we need to do this.
Yeah, well, I don't wanna delay.
Right, I'd rather just do it and get moving on it rather than miss the opportunity for.
They're willing to send us people up to help as far as explaining and stuff like that.
I just talked to her the other night.
So I, I would really just, like I say, this is the prelim, if we don't get it in, in the prelim, then I'm sunk. So that's why I'm asking for it now.
Okay.
And then my other additional to what we have.
It, it's, uh, it's, it's handled completely different, but it's specific to law enforcement, police officers, it's a, yeah.
Where, where, where's it, where's it fitting in the budget here?
Um.
It is on a line item. Do you remember what line item it is, Terry?
Uh, I don't.
Okay, so it is in the budget here.
No, my, my figures haven't been put forward to me for salaries and retirement yet, so. I have some in mind, but.
It should be.
I think Carmen's would be more workable.
Because it's just where we pay a certain, the county pays a certain percentage into retirement.
Yeah, there's a, it's a point nine seven percent difference.
What it does is allows them to be able to, at age fifty-five, they can retire with both benefits for retirement. As opposed to right now, they're at rule of ninety, so it has to be their years of service plus their age.
That and the state system, for anybody who isn't grandfather Dan, went to a defined contribution from a defined benefit.
So for new employees.
New employees will never, ever, ever be able to retire, they'll work for me until they're eighty and cost you guys a lot of money.
Yeah.
In medical and retirement, now that they approve vacation, if they've been there too that long.
Yeah.
But it is.
They, they're off more than they were.
Yeah.
A lot of departments do it already, law enforcement departments do it already.
Oral probation just went to it too.
Bureau, Bureau PD is on first.
Yeah, they did it like in eighteen or something, so.
It would be highly beneficial for the sheriff's department.
Yes.
Nothing we can do to date, but we probably should discuss it at the next meeting.
I would like to see it at the start of one twenty-four.
Yeah.
Okay. For this, we lost. See you next meeting. Are you gonna get him back again?
We're trying.
Okay.
Was that what loser?
Yeah.
Lost my. At least I can't see him growling at me if I ask for something, I didn't know about.
He just got pulled over.
Oh, another, another change we're looking at is, uh.
Are you good, Rick?
Nine twenty-nine, and I guess I, I didn't realize it, and Gwen brought that to me, which is good, that we already have a repayment going out. Or, or a corner for calls, we're paying them two hundred dollars a month. But we need to bring him on board officially with a contract as our medical director for the jail. He's always just did it, as, because we've always had to have a medical director. So we need to, we need to look at for the preliminary budget, increasing that to at least twelve thousand. And then between Jamie and I, we're gonna try to bring a contract with him, I can't speak for him. But if, if he was willing to do that, anywhere around the five hundred dollar a month range, we better take it. Because I, I know.
If we lose him as a medical director, we lose.
I know what he charges for the art plans to be their medical director.
It's essential.
Yeah, we don't get a choice, we don't have a jail.
But that would be for a later date, we need to have the money in there so I can try to bring that contract forward with him.
So should we put, I mean, would you guys be able to have a preliminary contract by next meeting or should we put it?
I, I think so, he's finally, uh.
I have it, I just need to get it, he finally got it to me, he was trying to find his original copy.
We're down to numbers now with him.
I'm just wondering if we need to have it on the agenda for next meeting or if we should wait till the meeting after for the contract?
I think the sooner we.
Okay, he's, he's a doctor, so dragging him in here is, is not gonna be easy.
No.
He'll probably drag me out of here before that happens, but I will get with him, I'll get some hard numbers and we'll get it, I can get it on the next meeting, I think.
Well, I'm getting a list, but I'm not sure that we can get him in here on a Wednesday.
No, but if we got, if, if he gives me, and the moment he's willing to agree with, I can bring it to the commission to see if you guys will agree with it.
I don't think we really need him here, we just, we did a contract and then should we get a budget for it?
Okay.
At which time then, we change this then?
Right now, yes.
My only other issue, again, and this is to keep me in the ballgame, is I want the commission for my department, I'm not speaking for anybody else. To seriously consider a five percent raise and or at my middle average employee, a flat rate that's equivalent. For the rest of the department, a flat rate that's, would be equivalent to a five percent raise for that employee through my entire department. You gotta keep me in the ballgame, I had, last year I had two employees come to me, but for disagreements with their management. They took a two dollar an hour pay cut to come work for me, so. And we're about two employees away from being really, really short in the jail, so. Just going forward, I haven't had them numbers, I, I know, I know Carmen's probably given you guys numbers, but. Uh, you guys, a few of you have sat here, a few of you are new, but we've been really, really frugal in the last few years coming up till now. With raises, decent plays, we've had inflation that's through the roof. And a few other issues, great purchases, everything else, I got some people that probably qualify for assistant programs working in my jail. I'm starting them at, you know, below twenty dollars a month, so we are, we are low down there, so if anything, whatever. I, you know, and I know you guys gotta work your numbers and, and I get that, but I got a soapbox. I need to be in the ballgame with retention and hiring, and I would like to see a five percent. Or equivalent flat rate on the average with my department. And then I'm here for questions on, on the budget, other than that, is from last year to this year, I'm trying to be really, really frugal. Uh, I think Carmen and I came up, and Rick came up with some really frugal numbers going forward, I'm not asking for anything that should be shocking you guys in that way.
Um, one question I have with the difference in pers that point nine percent, is that county funded or employee funded?
Well, I would like to see.
There's two portions, but I mean.
Yeah, it, it could be, it's how you guys work it, you know.
Okay.
I would like to see it county, it would be the county funded side of it that it goes up, not the employee side.
Okay.
But you could switch, I mean, it's like with any other benefit, you can pay what you want, make the employee pay what you want, but.
Okay, cause I thought some of them was like a standard what the county would pick up, but I, I think we can adjust that.
It has, pers has to have a certain percentage coming from the county.
For.
Right.
That it has to pay for, it doesn't, in order to be in law enforcement, it has to be a certain percentage. And then normally the employees will pick up that other little bit, but we're really close here in Mercer County to having that amount.
It's point nine, seven, five, point nine five percent difference, but I, I would let the people that know numbers, Carmen can.
Yeah.
And Don can speak to that better than I can.
My, my question was more, does it have to be equal or does it, but I mean, if the county can pick it up, the county can pick it up, I'm just.
County would pick it up and the employee, the employee E would see no change, except that I can get them, older employee, or not older.
Seasoned?
It's, yeah, it's not an age thing, it's a years of service thing.
It's.
I can get them years of service people retired before they're accruing vacation and sick leave that. You know, the top of our line and before they start having medical issues that cost, you know, us money and sick leave issues that cost me money.
Just really opens the doors for.
Yeah, yeah, our less seasoned employees don't cost as much money, it's, I mean, it's.
And it, and it looks good for them for preparing for retirement.
Yeah.
You know, they don't have to.
I got a few officers that are watching this and they're really, uh, they're biting my behind as I come in here, so.
Okay.
Questions?
Uh, Jean, anything?
No.
Rick, I forgot you last time, I don't know if you can hear me.
Can you hear us, Rick?
Rick, you have any questions on sheriff's budget? I don't need to see him, I just.
Do you have any questions on the sheriff's budget? Do you have any questions on the sheriff's budget?
Is it? Jamie?
Well.
I don't have anymore, but we'll put the pers thing on the agenda for Wednesday next week. And we'll start going towards that.
And I will have that, I'll have the coroner's contract hopefully ready, something close.
Okay. Okay.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you.
Thanks Terry.
Thank you Terry.
Short break, okay, take a quick recess here.
Carmen, did we get a sheet that shows like the salaries with a dollar an hour, what that, where, where's that sheet?
That sheet, yeah.
I don't know if we got one in our packet.
Well, no, no, I didn't give them in the packets.
When she figured out the preliminary budget, she does have it in the bill levy that we've kind of estimated.
Okay, but no, I can get.
Can I just, like, go on for the individual departments now?
But we can break right now.
Eight, forty-seven?
Nine, forty-seven.
All we have to do is just print them out.
Cause it's hard to talk about salaries when you're going down, what we're thinking of doing.
Well, it'll show you the whole, but it's not gonna be tied into the budget, you know what I mean? What I did on, hang on, um. To show you that, right now is, you're going through the budgets, but there's no money there, but in, what I did with the overall. I put the dollar, I put the highest.
The dollar, yeah, in this packet.
Right.
But it's not broken down into one sheet where I can see?
Absolutely, actually.
Which page? That's what I was looking for.
You don't have that there, but I gave it to you when we first talked about it way before, but I'll make you copies of the sheet. The sheet is easy, all I'm saying is you'll get to see the different levels, but we're not tying it in here, but yeah, let me go get that.
You said you gave it to us.
Well, that was our first budget, maybe when, remember when I came and I asked you guys for the months? Um, what, what raises seventy-five cent, you know, like we did last year, so that's just, yeah.
I'm saying.
I'm like, I, I was gonna say, I'll go, I'll hold my papers in my bag, I can go grab it. I'm like, I, okay, I was gonna say, I'll go, I'll hold my papers in my bag, I can go grab it, so.
It confused me because he's, Candy said this is coming out of the operational fund, this one eighty's coming out of the operational fund and that there's two hundred and twenty-six thousand in there, but then Sheriff said we can't touch that fund, but, but then Candy said we're taking it from that.
Right.
And then he said closure not capping, and then I'm like, wait a minute, that, that's what we sent.
Yeah, so, and then like I said, it threw me off because I'm like, why would we really have eight grand in there, but I know we have to have a whole bunch of money in there.
That's what I, yes.
You know what I mean?
Candy had a number because she had the other balance sheet, like this year's balance sheet. I feel like that should be in there.
Right. But then I say you don't deal balances, but then it helps me understand better, so I.
Especially when you're out of home. One of mine is actually, yeah, this issue is.
For now.
I don't know if she's gonna change that one earlier because.
Yeah, it was two pages.
Yes, we're paying you for these costs.
But for other stuff.
Together here.
But of one hundred.
No, like the.
Eight percent.
Then the next one up is the roads. Highway Department's next. It's right in the sheriff's.
State within here?
Yep.
It was different before we had.
Should be in front of it.
In front of it?
Well, I mean, he was there, he just wasn't giving away. I mean, he, he had a line, I mean, it could have been submitted, but he, he just, he wasn't going to.
It's my paper.
Should, but he did have, you know, like his three thousand.
Drives my way crazy.
It should have been paid up to him. Somebody should have submitted.
Right, right, no, I don't have that.
Let me see if it's on.
It should be out of my setting down with treasurer.
Just cake in here at two thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
What should I do?
Should be looking at this.
Okay. All right.
Jean's missing this sheet on his packet.
On which?
The eleven by seventeen, no, the, the county road stuff.
Maybe I do.
No, it would be right out to the sheriffs.
Yeah, his goes from the sheriffs to the buildings in here.
Okay, what's, uh, where's your sheriff? You are right.
Ninety-nine percent of the time.
Does that one percent?
Yes. That's, that, that's gonna be, it's gonna be my whole.
All right, but here.
Must have, must have slipped out. Okay, we ready to resume?
Oh, I, they asked for the, and I do, I never gave you one. Oh, what time? Oh, yeah, I was gonna call.
Okay.
I gotta put.
Yep.
Can I do? Okay, I'm gonna call you, Rick. Right, but he's. Okay. You there?
Yeah, buddy.
Okay, now everybody make sure you speak into the mics when you talk.
Okay.
Please and thank you.
So the mics should feed into that or?
No, but just because he should be able to hear you on speakerphone, just.
Okay.
We're open.
Open. Well, I don't think that's gonna improve it any. Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order nine fifty-six AM, Highway Department. Come on up, guys. Morning. We've just been kinda having whatever department kinda highlight areas that they want us to look at and then if we got questions, we've been asking after that, so.
This is just a guest.
Yeah, that's why they asked for this.
Okay, okay.
Ah, itch my back.
Okay, right there.
Yeah, it starts on page nine. The roads actually got three of these.
Which one was the one that goes away?
Uh, eight to secondary is the one that goes away.
That's what I thought, but then I was confused. Because of this, because I thought that we lose that.
Twenty twenty-four is the last year we can have.
Oh, so we have it before you have it.
We have it for this budget, but the next budget, it will go away.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Remember?
That's why I got confused. I'm like, should we have that one in there?
Yes, yeah.
We still have it through twenty twenty-four.
Because if it didn't pass last year, we could have still.
Had one more year?
At twenty-four, yeah.
Right, just checking to make sure. Slender. The one's got ten.
We got an extra ten, but I think the way we worded it is that we want, we're gonna take that until after twenty-four.
When the other one will away.
That, that's how we worded it in.
In the other, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it should be next year when we.
Right, because we have the option of adding an extra ten on top of that as a. So it's just trying to even it out.
Even it out, yeah.
Like nothing really changed to people, just.
Yeah.
Because this ten was going away.
Yes.
Okay, um, under health insurance, Carmen, you don't have anything. Is that because you're waiting for an estimate?
Because of this, we, we left this out of what we're looking at here. I put it in this booklet, but.
But.
When you look at the salaries, you're also looking at the end, they add in everybody's, um, everybody's Medicare, FICA, health, health retirements in there, everything.
That, that I understand, but, uh, health insurance, is that like, uh?
That's a separate one.
With that, isn't that a flat rate, no matter what you pay me?
Health insurance is that PERS health insurance that we pay. County pays their certain portion and then employees pay their ten percent. So that's why it's not in there, because it's part of their benefits package.
Yes, okay. If you pay me ten dollars an hour or if you pay me twenty dollars an hour, isn't my health insurance premium the same?
Okay, it, it's, yeah, unless you choose family versus single, and that's what changes that.
Okay.
So what Gwen does is she looks at in the departments who has single, who has family, and they adds it in there, so we have everybody covered.
So where is that on this sheet?
On here at the end on the back, it'll show you.
Because it's got retirement, Medicare, FICA, and then FICA and retirement together. So where is the health insurance at? I'm just making sure I didn't miss it.
You, you wrote, you act, Liza, you actually rolled it into kind of a second question of mine.
Sorry if I stepped on your feet.
No, no, that's, that's fine.
Trying to follow along.
No, no, that's fine.
That's where we need to put it together and why I wanna go through everything, but I know the health insurance, and we do have a health insurance fund that we mill for, for commie side of it, then the ten percent would come out of the. I wonder if we don't take it out of that health insurance. Anyway, yeah, that'll be something I gotta talk to Gwen about.
Right, because I was looking up line three twenty-four.
Health insurance fund. Yeah, three twenty-four, yeah. And, and, and because the road department is a separate fund, when we mill, we wanna put all of that in there, so that we know for that.
There's, uh.
Page sixty-three, there's the health insurance fund. I don't know if that answers any of your questions, Jean? And that's, uh, that's one that you'll go below under my auditor budgets, is that health insurance. And that's what we looked at when we budgeted for it, is what the county pays. When we pay this year, then we estimate, we do all the same.
So it's in the auditor's budget?
So it's a very good part.
Well, it's a general.
Right, it's not in, but it's not an individual department.
But we do wanna put it in the county road fund, yes, because that has to be milled. They mill that, so we wanna make sure that expense is included on that.
Right.
And I, but I like that.
I know, it's just kinda, when I was, so, kinda pointing out was that would basically be a flat amount, so that could almost be estimated and we could have a number at three twenty-four regardless of if they get a pay increase.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay, that's what I was looking to. Okay.
Okay.
No, this wouldn't be.
I like the sheriff's account summary mills is expected.
What's the general?
Just on the general, so, okay, but then that.
You guys still digesting, looking at it or?
Yeah, we found a couple.
Okay.
Okay.
You wanna go over those?
Yeah, yeah.
He's waiting for.
So, um, basically what we've done is we've had everybody come in and highlight the items they'd like us to look at and then after you've talked about what you want us to look at, then if we have any questions about how it's done or, then we'll, then we'll ask in return, so to speak. So for you guys, it's probably a list of projects you're thinking and then if there's any other special categories like equipment or stuff like that.
And where are we at, Mr. John?
We are on the road department. We are on.
It is Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday. So it's, uh, right, fund twenty-one forty. Um, it's page nine in the eight and a half by eleven booklet. It's the last eleven by seventeen page in this booklet. And, yeah, are we, we all in the one spot?
I think so. I was just wondering now if we, if the road department gives their presentation?
Yep.
Okay, and then we can.
Yeah, and they, they were just kinda looking at comparing this to what they had, so.
Okay.
I was just digesting it. I hadn't seen it, so I was just, I was doing some quick numbers and what we're showing checks out on the.
The big sheet.
On the, yeah, on the consulting and the payment to contractors side.
Okay.
And those, just so you're aware, those numbers reflect, we, we took some time, Jean, Rick and Ken and I sat down and went through those based on costs broken out based on actually, you know, what we actually anticipate on seeing this year twenty twenty-four and so on. Feel good about those numbers.
Okay, so what, what projects are we thinking in twenty-four?
You have your miscellaneous catching and striking. You have, uh.
Do you have a dollar amount on that? Or is that, uh?
Well, it's all, it's all upped into your payments to contractors. Do you want it broken out, you're saying?
Yeah, just kind of a rough estimate.
I got, I got, I printed extras that you, so you can see them. I'll just give them to you if you want.
Okay.
Did we?
Can I get a copy of it? I just wanted to.
Is this already copy have or?
Think it's gonna change.
Twenty-four is right here.
Anything you guys are changing, whatever I want.
Charlie, could you guys adjust that consulting base so that they have thirty-eight years now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it's just a few numbers.
Okay, make correction on it.
I think he said he's got more. You got part of this?
I wanna make sure.
I think that.
Yeah. But, yeah, Ken noticed a few things that.
On line four forty-one, what is the big project that we're doing there for building maintenance?
Rick had said that in this, I knew, he was talking about this here payment contractors.
We don't have to repeat it.
Yes, then we don't have to repeat the same.
Sorry.
And your advertising costs are broken out there too, so you get total, if you take that number, if you take the full number and you subtract out all the.
Okay.
So when you add them up, it should match that. If you have questions with that, just let me know.
Thank you.
You have a copy of that?
Numbers are different. His numbers are here.
Are they?
They already changed.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
So what lines am I looking at?
Uh, the twenty twenty-four projects or down?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, okay.
So that's the breakdown or breakdown.
Okay.
This is what we went through with you and Rick and Ken.
Okay, Liza's question on this sheet that came from Carmen, was it four?
Uh, four.
Four forty-one.
Building maintenance of four forty-one, just wondering because it went substantially up, so.
Big, big one.
Reason why I was at three seventy-five is because Rick had made a comment about possibly getting offices in, in the front, because our offices are upstairs at the deal.
Oh, eighty-eight.
And I do agree with that. Um, and then we were waiting for questions still and they finally got us a, uh, estimate and so we had just put that in there for a rough estimate thinking, because I was with Charlie's number, but they did give back to us and it's quite a bit lower actually for a thirty by thirty, um, office building, seventy thousand, three ninety, but that's not including the concrete. The concrete's already there, but I think they gotta, they would still have to do some work on that, the concrete, but I already thought in that other, we were talking, probably, you know, I had less than two hundred thousand should give us that office with, you know, because we got desk, the desk upstairs, that'll work, or I think with H O D, like some filing cabinets and that's about, I mean, there is, there's no water and sewer out there, but there's heat and electricity, but that's included in, in the code. So probably right around, like I say, we have to get a deal from the, a concrete person, but it's not three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Like I say, that was just a rough estimate because we didn't know.
So three seventy-five is high?
Yeah, that's way high.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'd rather be high in the preliminary and then we get some numbers.
Right, but I mean, I think even if we were to go down to two hundred thousand, we should be okay.
And there's nothing that can like be rearranged to use your ground level now and move something else upstairs for?
Well, because we're gonna use that in, um, well, not. Yeah, because like I say, we're upstairs, we got the filter room and the slot fire room upstairs, we're gonna move the break room, um, upstairs too. Cause it's got a sink and everything up there already existing.
Just making sure there was nothing that could be.
Yeah, it's just not enough, like where we would be downstairs isn't enough for offices and like a meeting room there.
Right.
Is what, you know, you're good suggestion.
Well, and the, the other thing to keep in mind too, the nice thing about that is that the estimates that you received are low enough, according to statute, that you don't have to have an engineer bid and all that stuff. Like you could let Western build it for that price.
Yeah, we can sole source or, or quote.
Right, you can pick whoever you want, it's just when public funds are used to do stuff like that, you know, statute limitations, I think.
If we get under two fifty, right?
Two fifty, yeah. So, so budget wise, you're thinking two hundred?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Okay, so we can move that to two hundred K. Carmen, that's on four forty-one?
Yep.
Yeah.
Move that to two hundred. Okay. Um, anyway, back to projects, so in twenty-four, we got the patching.
We have patching, Mercer twenty bridge replacement, county twenty road repairs, uh, chip seals on twenty-six, seven, twenty-seven south and Hazen Bay. And then the airport road. Pay, pay, paving the airport road to the airport.
Okay. So then the, the blue number, that's that year total, right?
That's that year total, including everything to the left, so that includes contractor, cop payments to contractors, that includes consulting fees, that includes advertising costs. And then it's, um, also includes the reduction of, you'll notice the federal aid state grant, um, any sort of aid monies that are available to us. We have that deducted out of there.
Okay.
So that one point zero forty million on the bridge job is for the, it's a federal aid that we're getting on that part there.
Right, so Mercer County Bridge Engineering's done, that was in twenty-three, but there's construction engineering in this one?
Construction engineering only, right.
Yeah, County twenty Rotary Repairs, is there any engineering in that?
No, that's a budget that the road department's using for County twenty. That's the two fifty limitation. So it, yeah, we, we, we know we can spend up to that much money before we have to have something bid, so that, that's the thought process that I had in our conversation.
And then the chip seal on twenty-six, seven, and twenty-seven, the engineering design and construction would all be in twenty-four?
Like everything?
Yeah.
Everything, okay.
Yeah.
Same with the airport route would be all done?
Nope, just construction.
Just construction.
We, we, we'll all be bringing in, like I said, a.
Uh, taskware pro, okay.
For design this year.
Yeah, this year?
Of all, so he's got.
And that's been taken care of already?
That's line fifteen.
Fifteen, now I see it.
Yep.
Now I see it, yeah.
Okay.
And twenty-seven north, like to Hazen Bay, are we going from eighteen oh six north, or the new stretch that's gonna be overlaid this year, it's gonna be chip sealed again next year?
That's just, you're right, just the Hazen Bay portion of it.
From eighteen oh six north, okay.
Yep.
But we, I thought we were gonna get like a quote, right, to see once, what they, what the bees come in.
We, we can bid an alternate to include it.
See what they.
If it comes.
I was just making sure it wasn't the same portion we're overlaying right now.
Already fixing.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, usually the chip seals with, I mean, they've been going, we've been going two years after an overlay, but.
You can do it right away if you really want to, uh.
No, I was just asking because I was.
Prefer to wait the two years.
Yeah. Cause we're doing it right now.
Got you, yep.
If possible.
And then, are we expecting any of the twenty-five projects to be designed in twenty-four? The bridge replacement, that twenty-nine sixteen?
That's starting actually twenty-three, you'll notice.
Okay.
That's the one that we got in CBD funds for.
Okay.
And which bridges does?
That's County seventeen east of Zap.
Yeah, by the Translode.
South Translode.
Southern North South Road.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so the engineering fees are in twenty-three on that one, and that's the COVID money?
So that's already taken care of?
That's already taken care of.
It's gonna be, yeah.
But the engineering portion, design engineering is taken care of.
Right. County twenty-one overlay, the engineering, design, and construction are in twenty-five.
Right, that's the way we're showing it right now.
Okay. So based on this, we're either designing and constructing in twenty-four, or design started in twenty-three. And everything in twenty-five is being designed in construction engineering in twenty-five?
With the exception of seventeen.
Correct. Okay.
Where's fifty, where's fifty-two? Fifty-second Avenue, Benahazan Airport Road, which road is that?
That's the airport road.
But that says fifty, I thought that was fifty-first.
Oh, that one way at the bottom?
Yeah.
We, I wasn't sure, that was on the list from prior to my time working with you guys at Eric, and we talked about that.
Cause on the other side of the airport, it's Moss at Way and like Rodeo.
I'm not even sure what that, I left that on there because it was on there before, and I don't know much about that road.
Okay.
Where, where is that on your sheet?
The very bottom.
Very bottom of the question mark, the last question mark? I was wondering where that road was.
Oh, sorry, no.
Which road it was?
Those were just, I see projects mentioned where that, you know, long-term, in the future, we need to maybe be thinking about this now, it's. Cause this was created in twenty twenty, this five-year snapshot.
I was trying to figure out which road it actually, like fifty-second Avenue.
Does it get larger to the east or to the west?
Actually, it turns onto that Rodeo Drive, and then it goes straight.
Yeah, but that's called Moss at Way.
Right, Moss at Way comes off, but then you turn into that.
It could be renamed, but.
They have a split off, and then it goes straight south onto County twenty, I believe that is your fifty-second Avenue.
That whole mile or?
So it's just a little piece around.
From like Sean Strummy's straight south, I suppose would be.
Yep.
Yeah, cause we're fiftieth and then airport would be fifty, yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's just a.
That's kind of very one of those.
Oh, yeah, one point five miles, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just needed to know.
I just said.
So couldn't worry myself.
No, I know.
Cause we've talked about that years past.
Would it be like the whole road?
Yeah, from that, you know where it comes out on twenty down there?
Yeah.
Then all, so, we've talked about.
Cause we wouldn't just do pavement of just that north-south road, we would do the whole.
This is grading.
Oh, this is grading.
Oh, grading, oh, yeah, grading.
Cause now it's just to, you know, pass that pasture way.
We were stuck on pavement.
We really don't have a other alternate, uh, north-south, you know, cause if the bridge is out at Hazen.
You drive to Bembla.
So then, great, that's why we were talking about this stretch here a couple years ago.
Okay.
Remember Charlie? It was projected, but I mean.
Right.
Get something.
Did you talk to Eric, it might have been right before.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, that's outside of our.
Right, right, that's beyond us.
It's like pasture way themselves.
Yep, I know, I was just gonna say, I just got an email about applying for money.
Yes.
For infrastructure money.
Yes, that was an email yesterday.
Couldn't we throw this out there to apply for that?
Was there, there was a township one though?
Yes, that email.
See, I'll take, we'll check into it, we're not, we're unorganized, so.
Yeah, we don't have townships.
Well, it's a check though, but we'll, uh, but it was township.
Maybe there's some fine print of it, but yeah, it was townships, that email yesterday.
Does that eliminate any county that doesn't have one of these townships? I thought it was just.
There's more money than has been made available though, it was just recently announced, you're, you're.
I think we need to look into that.
Yeah, I agree.
I can get some information on it.
Is that what you get cut across?
Yep.
But I mean, if we get grant funding, whatever, we can always move projects up.
Yes, I understand that, but.
It's always an adventure on that one.
Beans were talking about that. And I, we all just got that email about the thirty million in grants, and it said apply. Why should we not apply? And if we get the money for this, yeah, we can move it up. Do it next week if there is a check next week.
Always things move that quick.
Hooray.
Yeah, we got the second fastest they ever moved.
So I guess, long story short, that synopsis that we just kind of went through shakes out based on the numbers that you have there. If you take your payments to contractors of one point seven four seven, the figure you've listed there, that would be, if you deduce out the consulting fees, the federal aid, the advertisement fees, then that number is good, so.
Okay.
Ken?
Yep.
Line eight eighty-five, I was wondering why that one jumped so high too?
Yeah, it was, uh, that's the one we caught too, it should be thirty-five thousand, not two hundred.
Okay, so there's an extra zero.
Okay.
We know.
I was like, man, you paved the whole county here.
Went up a lot last year, but not that much, yeah, it should be thirty-five thousand, not two fifty.
Got that coming.
But, but the one above it, so we ain't something, we're gonna, that one should be that line eight seventy-nine, uh.
Or no, eighty-eight.
Yeah, eighty-eight, excuse me, that should be a hundred.
Hundred. I was saying, ah, crap, go back.
Yeah, right? So, yeah, that should be a hundred thousand. We're still ahead a little bit though.
The royalties one should be a hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Cause that's what we pay on gravel?
Yeah, for the mineral.
Or square, you know, whatever we're.
Well, the difference there is quite a bit, from three sixty to one thirty-five, so.
I think that's all I've seen.
Still going in the right direction.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, no, and the, the consulting fees was high.
Which ones are?
Three thirty-seven they have listed, it was lower than that. So if I add that up to the ten. I'm just gonna.
Out of the preliminary between these three.
I like the sound of that, to, to our benefit, right, not to try to find the money.
Correct.
Yeah, it should be three twelve.
What line?
Line three fifteen?
Three fifteen, should be three twelve.
Oh, okay. Keep lowering things.
All right.
Yeah. Um, Ken, what does eight seventy-five, what does gravelling and crushing all entail for the new beat?
That's gonna be paying for the actual product itself.
Okay.
You know, the.
It's different than the royalty.
Yeah, royalties are the payments for the actual material, and then, yeah, gravel, crushing, and score, it would be that.
Okay.
Eight eight seventy-five, for like a Fisher does it, or whoever, Sundry. And that includes like excavator, you know, and if they have to take off over burden to get to it, that's all in there.
Okay.
So the county has some of its own pits, or is that just?
We just got that one a little bit, Joel Fleeger's.
Okay.
And then we've been, uh, buying some from Randy too, up there by Beaver Bay.
Yep, okay.
So we do have Joel's?
Say again?
We do have Joel's pit?
Yes, yep, I think for the next seven years.
That's good gravel.
You guys gotta put up some fences, huh?
What's happening, yeah, fences?
Fences, it went up five to five hundred.
Yeah, that's like if we have to fence off anything for like by a gravel pit area, or like snow fence too, that we use for winter time.
Snow fence too, okay.
Okay, on this sheet?
Yep.
We got two million for twenty-four.
For what?
For fiscal twenty-four?
Oh, over there, yes, yep.
Where do I move, where, what numbers over here on this sheet reflect?
That's what I was, yeah, so that's what I was saying, that two million eighty-five, you have to subtract out the consulting fees of this sheet. And the advertising fees to get that one point seven four seven, that's in the payments contractors.
Okay.
Yep.
So this is, uh, this two million is the payments contractors consulting fees and.
Advertising. Down at the bot, nine forty-two, sixteen hundred bucks.
I just realized Dan wasn't here once you said advertise.
Right?
Did you get the paper?
Any deals?
Right.
Just my hands. Got my winter gloves in my hand.
I didn't.
Okay, Ken, Charlie, anything else you wanna point out?
I'll see if there are questions.
Well, I noticed.
Think we kind of addressed the big ones, Jean, any questions?
No, not, not yet.
Not currently?
Cause culverts is on here and it's on here, do we have a box culvert for twenty?
Well, I thought we were gonna go with R C P, oh, yeah, twenty, that hasn't been bid.
The culvert's line item, is that what you're talking?
That's not it, that's just for like.
Isn't that just for?
Just for our own ways that we need like.
General culverts.
And the reason why we went up there is because a lot of these are getting older and.
Right.
We replace what we can, but they're expensive.
There was a C M P.
Right.
Only eighteen twenty-four inch pipe in the process, I think that's what that's.
The normal ones?
But you're, yeah, so, yep.
How much pipe do you?
Rick, you got any questions for road?
Rick?
No, I feel tired again, but I don't have.
Okay. You want me to come back to you, Jean, or you got any, you're good, Liza?
I'm good.
Jamie? Okay, I think we're good. Unless you got anything else?
No.
I don't think so.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Then, for our preliminary budget purposes, maybe should that Carmen put something in here for, um, these salaries?
Yeah, we gotta do that in all of them.
We're gonna do that at the end.
I think she's gonna cover it when we get to the auditor budget stuff, but yeah, that'll have to be in all these before we approve a preliminary.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Pardon? I'm gonna step out of the seat for a little.
Okay.
Okay.
Thirty-seven.
Go.
We're gonna move to Jim next, if you wanna come in and assume the spot up front.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Which one do you wanna look at first, there's three of them.
We'll wait for Jean to step back in, but, um. Do you have the same printout?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Start from the top?
Yeah, we'll just wait for Jean, but what we've been doing is, um, each department kind of highlights what, what you got going on, or, you know, increases, different things like that. And then go through that, and then if we got any additional questions, we'll ask them.
About forty-one?
That'd be.
Sorry about that. I think forty-one's the only one that would be in there, wouldn't it?
That was a non-adjunct question, so.
Yeah. Okay, Jim, why don't you go through what you got on, on this sheet here, the forty-one six ten?
Okay, there's the building and grounds. Okay, there's the building and grounds. Uh, parts labor and toying, I left the same, supplies and materials, that's for janitorial, like, cleaning supplies, things like that. I left that the same, gasol and fuel. I should drop that down a little bit, cause looks like we haven't used about half that throughout the year, so, a little less than that. Renovation of county property, I got that at forty-five thousand. That again is, uh, to the county properties that get taken back, that's to either demo them, or lock them up, or pay utilities, things like that, so, that's a guess.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that's enough or not enough for what, but, put that at forty-five. Real estate, I don't think we're buying any real estate. Future building improvements, that is money that we always budget for to put into the building fund each year. So, and that's about what we've been doing every year for several years. Um, ADA improvements, I don't see any, uh, billing improvements, that one increased significantly because, as you know, we had talked about budget numbers with core facility, about changing out the boilers in the old LEC building. And that, uh, I put at about six hundred thousand, and I still left it in there to other areas that we haven't done yet, that we've talked about in the past couple of years, was changing flooring in the old bathrooms in the courthouse here, area. And flooring in the pink and blue tile bathrooms in the conference room over here. That's the only things we haven't done yet, so I put sixteen-three in there for that. Uh, the next one, billing maintenance, that increased a little bit, um, for the facts, I've got several service contracts, like with service gr- sewer grinders, the cat generator, ETS, fire extinguisher system, over fire, things like that. And those service contracts come in at twenty-three, three fifty. With the main battery backup UPS, it's going on over five years now, and they suggest we replace batteries, so I added eighty-five hundred in there for that. And plus, we're going to have a little bit extra on our service contract with Energy Tech, that's the ETS one, with the heating controls. Uh, it's just only gonna be a partial year, cause our warranty O should cover three quarters of the year, so then they're gonna just write up something for the rest of the year, and then we'll, once the next year comes around, it'll be a full year with all the controls in, so.
Okay.
And then I just put eighty thousand dollars for miscellaneous on for scene maintenance, that's a guess too, don't know what'll break or what, so. Uh, lawn care left the same, that includes the spraying of the lawns, contract, cracked ceiling parking lots, and I miscellaneous, I got a twenty-five hundred for just odds and ends that we need for outside maintenance. Let's see, least purchase of equipment, that's for like, uh, I left that the same, that's for like vacuum cleaners and equipment purchases for the shop, things like that, so. Tires, left that the same, that's for like Bobcat tires, or things like that, lawnmower tires.
Totals, totals, yeah.
I know, like, what? You're getting tires again, right? You get hundred, twenty?
What's that? Just, uh.
Our sheet shows.
Nine sixty-two, she has tires again, that's all.
And I got thrown off.
Oh.
I wasn't even looking to laugh.
She's like circled, I was like, it's a total, it's a total.
Uh, questions on any of that, or?
I don't think so. You can move on to janitorial.
Okay, um, most of this one has to do with salaries, I have, uh, myself, two others are full-time, and I have one part-time, that's, it's thirteen hundred hours a year for that custodian, and then I add three hundred hours for extra, like, the yearly stuff, like shampooing carpets and things like that. So it's about sixteen hundred dollars for one employee, so. Um, I don't know what we're gonna do for salaries, but I'd like to at least see a dollar, you know, possibly five percent, I don't know, three might be a little low for some of my lower paid employees. Um, vacation sickly payout, that's if someone leaves, and the rest, I pretty much left the same, as is, the only thing I upped was a little bit, was, I took away from the education training, two hundred fifty, and added it to the tires. If I need tires, that's for the maintenance pickup, so. And all like the gas, oil, and fuel, that's for the maintenance pickup, is in this budget here.
You said you'd need new tires on the?
No, I don't, but I just put it in there in case, you know, if you cut a tires and.
Yep.
You gotta buy a set and stuff, so. Okay.
Can you get a ti- set of tires for seven fifty?
You ain't getting four tires, I just put four tires on my pickup, it was twelve hundred.
That's what I'm thinking, it should be a little bit higher, just cause.
That's why I asked him.
Yeah.
Is it looking like you're gonna need it this year, Jim?
What's that?
I missed that. Does it look like you're gonna need tires this year, or should we just keep building it till the?
I shouldn't, they're, they're good yet, but.
So if we build again?
Well, I don't know if this one really builds though, this is.
But I think you said if you ruin a tire, this would be to cover like two tires.
Yeah, we could get two.
Is it a two-wheel drive?
Four.
Four.
I'm almost thinking fifteen hundred. And I mean, if we don't use it, we don't use it, but.
Cause right now, there's a lot of tread left on them.
Yeah, um, well, we just wanna do kind of a, make sure we approach it correctly, and, um, I don't know if which way would matter, we'd have to either adjust the budget or not, but, what we're getting at is, if you ruin a tire, and it's a four-wheel drive, generally they.
Yeah.
They, you replace all four, you can't do because of the difference in wear, that, that doesn't work, you'll wear your tires out quick then.
Yeah.
So, we either. I guess with what we know, then we should, I wish you'd change it right now. And make it close to.
Cause there is like five hundred in the parts labor, labor toying too, I could use some of that if.
Well, we as, as commissioners, we just would have to decide if we wanna have, change that right now, or dumb if he does run a tire next year, which he doesn't plan on, so.
No.
We could either leave it at seven fifty, or then we just have to do a modification.
And I generally usually have, I'm, I'm never overspent on this, you know, with.
Mm-hmm.
Unless we really, really have, I, I have a lot of overtime built in our salaries too, with.
So the tires.
So the overall budget really is never that tight.
So the tires up above in the buildings and grounds, under nine sixty-two, that's for like Bobcat and stuff.
Yeah, Bobcat, lawnmower.
And lawnmower, okay. But then, we also have a nine sixty-two, but it's under janitorial, or the janitor one. Am I reading that right?
Yeah, so does it all get combined in yours, Carmen, or are they separated? They're separate, cause there's separate funds, okay.
Okay, that's what I was kinda wondering.
But you still count them both in nine sixty-two?
Under, what one's under five, one's six, ten, and one's under four, one's six, four.
I knew I should have asked.
But.
It's important to follow it.
Right.
Make sure that, yes.
I guess my recommendation would, for, uh, forty-one six twenty, line nine sixty-two, go to fifteen hundred in the preliminary, and then we can talk about it more before we get to the final.
I, 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 I'm a self-aware disorder.
Yep, just for Jim's janitor, um, his pickup for the, for the building, basically.
Under, under janitor, general government, that, that line item nine sixty-two? We're, right now, we're gonna change that to fifteen hundred instead of seven fifty. Okay.
Period, not a karma. Not, 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 whatever.
Yep.
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 Just make sure. Nope, we're replacing slightly. Jamie, just put your tires on almost every week.
Okay, yeah, okay, um, Jim, you can go to the risk management, I don't think we have any other questions on.
Okay, and the risk management, uh, question?
No.
Uh, the salary, the one one four, did you know that's combined with my other salary now, so that's zero.
Oh.
On here.
Yeah, that was in twenty-two and twenty-one. And then, yeah, for some reason, that twenty-three budget got shrunk down. It's there.
And, uh, travel and per diem, that I think was the same, and you don't have any numbers in there, but I left that, these all basically the same. Only thing I adjusted on here was the safety supplies line, I dropped that down five hundred, and I added that to the education training, cause those prices for doing CPR training and such has gone up. So I want a little more in there to cover that. And I, I really feel that I wouldn't like any of this cut, because you, you got the report from last time, and it shows our, our, our dividend checks and our refunds, they actually came into about, if I recall right, is like sixteen thousand dollars, so, I think safety is a big thing, I, I hope we wouldn't cut any of that, so.
But that's kinda bad business. Cut it safety. We're not gonna go there.
Okay. Good.
It's in there, but it's shrunk, I'm sorry, the printing thing.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it is very tiny.
Yeah, I can't. But basically, the risk management, I think was the same as last year.
Right?
Cause you don't have those.
That was just numbers.
The numbers didn't come up in here on my.
Only because when I put it into print like this, it's shrunk, I didn't realize it.
I thought they were just.
Yeah, I think it's.
Five thousand and fifteen hundred. Do you want me to run it out?
No, 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 we're.
We'll have it on our next.
It should be the same, cause I didn't change it, I just adjusted from one line to the other.
We're gonna blind that one on Excel. Out, out of format. Okay, anything else you got, Jim?
That should be it. That is the biggest thing, is the boiler project that we're looking at doing, that.
And we got numbers from Chris, but we haven't approved anything yet, correct? Is that where we?
No.
No, we were gonna budget for it.
We were gonna budget for it.
Gotcha.
We approved it, and it is in here, right, Jim?
What's that?
That boiler project is in here, I get that six hundred.
I got six hundred thousand, I kept punching in there for that.
That is one we got all set to go, where we set up the meeting that we would.
Yep. Okay, Rick, any questions for Jim?
I, the only answer, just a question was, uh, on the tires, and I got that clarified.
Okay, Gene?
Nope.
Liza?
Nope.
Jamie? I don't have any more?
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah.
No, the county.
What did Rick say?
Oh, what'd you say?
I couldn't, couldn't hear when he was talking about our budgeting for our, uh, we've got that covered with the, uh, boiler and, uh, and the chiller and that stuff that we were working on, or is that in twenty-three rather than twenty-four?
Chiller is gonna be done now.
The chiller's done this year, the boiler project would be in twenty-four.
Can you hear that, Rick?
Yeah.
Any other questions on that?
No, but on your period about how we were planning on.
Well, I'm going.
I think we had it figured out, we had enough.
Oh, yeah, we had enough money for it.
For this year.
How are they doing on the chiller project? Where are we at?
They're ordered, that's all I know. There's no ship date yet, so.
No ship date.
Okay, Jamie, we're gonna take your troubleies.
Oh, that's fine.
Ten forty-six. Okay, Rick, they took a break. Yeah. Okay, alright, sounds good. Hey, Craig. I got it wrong again. Did you see on the budget, Jenta, I put U D S?
You were sorry.
Somebody, yeah, you're the one who told me, but I still sent it out that way, I can't believe I did that.
Well, I didn't see that, and I didn't see the.
No, you saw it in the minutes.
Today, but in the minutes, it said April instead of July.
Oh, yeah.
I have it wrong again, and I didn't see that.
Oh, well.
Could be worse.
Could be worse. That's what I always say, could get worse. You think it's bad now, could get worse.
Okay, ten forty-eight. We're pretty much on schedule. Well, okay, maybe fifteen minutes off.
What?
Uh, according to the schedule, I'm just curious to see how well that, I think we're at all fifteen minutes.
Oh, man, trying to get my mess straightened out here again.
I don't know if this is important to anyone, but I lost my phone. You lost your phone? I have, I have a phone. Let it kinda go with this. I tried to call it. Oh, you laughed last night. But I did get to talk to the guy that paid for the social services bill, that was my last call, so he will be in. I mean, I blame my kids usually. That's why I have a landline to call like someone.
Call me back whenever you're ready.
Okay.
We're not.
Mission is, so we'll wait for them. I'm bringing coasters now.
Coasters.
Okay.
All right, ready to resume?
I am ready, if you're ready.
Okay, ten fifty, call the meeting back to order, we're on to various other budgets, um.
And here's the thing with these, if they come in, they come in, otherwise, if they don't, everything is pretty much the same, but they're around for questions. He will get them, but.
Well, we got, um, Craig here, we can talk about the extension service.
Okay.
Craig, what we've been doing is we've just been, um, if you have any highlights, any major changes. Um, you can point those out, but it sounds like yours is pretty much the same. And then we just kind of ask questions if we have any.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, if you could come up. Um, we got Rick on the phone.
Oh, I went, I went the other way.
This one?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, fund twenty-nine sixty and twenty-nine sixty.
Twenty-nine sixty, right?
Yes.
Yes. Twenty-nine, I think it was about.
This one here also?
Yes.
Yes.
Extension agency, oh, that's, that's the site.
It's page thirty-five and. This booklet.
Thirty-five, well, that's taking me a while. Oops. Mine goes from seventeen to thirty-nine. Oh, you're.
I only had it in order, what?
Right there.
Take a couple seconds.
That was not really.
Michael's page one twelve, the one that I got. No, I don't have it. Carmen gave me a condenser.
Condenser. On a couple things.
I go from page seventeen to page thirty-nine.
Well, yeah, that seventeen's in a weird spot, but.
Set that before that seventeen is in forty, between like forty-one and forty-two or whatever.
Oh, okay, here we go.
But then, oh, here. But then we go nineteen was in there.
Curious, county agent, right here.
Okay.
I know, I'll get the page straight up.
Oh, sorry, you, you've said that to me a few times, I need to start listening better. You said there.
Page thirty-five, Carmen?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thirty-five, yep.
Okay, you, you said you put them in fund order? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll get them.
No, that's fine.
Okay, Craig, did you have any thing to point out?
Just, I guess, everything's pretty much the same, I guess, the couple things that are gonna go up this year is. Uh, our part-time secretarial position, if she stays on full-time, that'll be a full amount, because that'll actually be for. Roughly for a full year, we have, the way it's worked out, we haven't actually had one here for the last year and a half, that's been actually a full year, so that's why that. Number's increased. And then. Uh, my budget is the increase is my, uh, increase in pay, pay this year, in medicine pay, pay. And then our rent, our rent will go up another thousand bucks this year, so that's why that number's higher. So that's basically the three things that'll go up. Everything else is relatively the same, with the question marks, obviously, whatever the health insurance amount actually ends up being. And then, uh, I did up the travel two hundred bucks, just the way things are going, that's probably gonna be a little higher. Um, so.
How much is the rent going up?
A thousand bucks.
Thousand bucks?
For, for the year?
For the year.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's?
And that's out of five-year plan, and I think this is your number three, so the increase, there's.
Yeah, that's.
There'd be, there'd be another increase to it next year, too.
I don't know, but.
What's, um, the program, Ed, nine nineteen line item?
Uh, Cindy would have to explain that one to you, that. That is, uh, one that's in there. I don't know, it, it's, has to do with the, the pesticide stuff, which actually gets sent to Fargo. So it's a line item that we had there, but then they changed, to my knowledge, I believe, they changed it, they changed it about five or six years ago. So. That's, I, that's where we're working with Carmen to get that figured out, to like on the next page, too. On how that all transfers, so. That education and training one is just the line item there, too, so.
Yeah, they're looking at something different.
Yeah. So it's still there.
So.
So other than that, I don't foresee a whole lot of changes, I just up things just a little bit.
That's educational and training, they're talking about this program, Ed. Yeah.
So that, yeah.
Do you need that five hundred still on nine twenty, Craig? Or is that kind of rolling into nine nineteen then?
Nine twenty is, is, I up that, nine twenty, I up that five hundred, I put, I put it up into a thousand. That's educational and training, that's any, uh, that, so I thought you were talking about nine, nine nineteen.
We were.
Our show's different.
Yeah.
Can you look at ours for a minute?
On nine nineteen, you have a thousand, on nine twenty, you have zero.
Should, okay, on nine twenty, it should be a thousand, and on nine nineteen, it should be zero.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that's easy enough.
Now I, now I get it better.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess maybe that got recorded wrong, 'cause on my page, I show it that way, and Carmen, it shows differently.
Okay, so we need.
Okay. That's easy enough to fix.
Yeah.
Do we need to have in your next one, does nine twenty need to have a thousand dollars in it, too, then, or just?
Nine nineteen can remain zero, nine twenty, it was at five hundred for this year, I, I, I upped it five hundred dollars. And that's to do more, that's educational training for, uh, for both Matt and I to do personal educational training. If there's some type of training we wanna go to, other than what extension provides, and sometimes that happens. So that's why it's up there.
No, sorry.
And it also, it's also to do some promotional work for extension also. On that, too, that we don't necessarily have money for, to try to, we try to do some type of appreciation. Type of educational programming also, usually, to, uh, to, uh. Provide educational materials, like, I think Travis went to it last year, we do it in January with the Soil Conservation Service. The sixteen, and I think, I think you were there, Jamie, or somebody was there, we did it at the City Hall in January, where we, where we promote, we promote our. Our, our outstanding agricultureists, it's on Conservation, they've had that supper, and we, and we had that program, we usually have a speaker come in, so.
Yeah.
Provide some funding for that.
Jamie's question is on the separate fund.
Yeah.
Um, it goes further down on the page, it's the same line item number.
Does that need to have a dollar amount on it?
On nine nineteen?
No.
Or nine twenty.
Different fund.
Conservation and economy development?
Yeah.
I believe it's, but it's.
I don't know if he has that or not.
I don't have that, no.
They're talking down here, there's another nine twenty, and then one ninety-one.
I only have, I only have the one, I only have this nine twenty. These two, I'm not sure what that one's all about.
You're not tied into that twenty-nine sixty-one, huh?
Twenty, twenty what?
Twenty-nine sixty-one, so what you were going through right now is twenty-nine sixty.
Yeah, and maybe you have twenty-nine sixty-one as well, I believe.
And that would have been.
I just wanna make sure you have got a budget.
Yeah, 'cause your budget is not.
Yeah.
Two thousand.
Yeah, that would be getting right there.
Yeah.
Right.
This one. This, this, these two here. These two here are the. This is where it gets confusing, because to my knowledge, this is what needs to be kind of worked, worked out, because. We get pesticide funds, and the county, we charge people for pesti, pesticide funds. And that is all done through N D S U. N D S U gives us a kickback on that. But it's not actually our money, unless we request for it. So the money's there, but in order to get it, we have to request it.
What do you use it for? Like, have you ever requested it, or you just?
It's supposed to be used for maintaining the pesticide program. So we have, so a lot of times when we get new computers and stuff like that, the county pesticide will kick in some money for the. Cost of the computers. And computers and printers and things like that. Usually, when we get computers and printers and have to update that, not, not the big, huge printer, I'm talking the small little printers in our personal. Cindy's and I's computers, whenever they gotta be updated, about every five years roughly, pesticide will kick in some money for that. So, and then, and then there's also, I'm not sure how the dividend thing works either. When, for like telephone and all that. That's what I know about it.
Okay, and that's that kickback from West River.
Some of that stuff, too, yeah. That's the way I understand that.
And just talk to me about that.
Cindy can, Cindy can explain it better, but on that four eleven and nine twenty, that, I believe that's what some of that, that stuff is.
I just wanna make sure you have enough in where you need to have it.
Yeah, the money, the money's there.
Pesticide and all that.
Yeah, the money is there for that.
And there's nothing special or out of the ordinary that you're gonna have this year, be, this coming year, because it's gonna be the fifty-year celebration at Mercer County Fair?
Not that would, not that would, that, none of that would come out of your.
Okay.
That would come out of the Fair Board budget, or that'd come out of the four-H Council budget.
Okay, so not for extension.
That's, that's, extension, extension doesn't have any funds for the fair on that, that's all goes through the Fair Board.
Advertising and everything goes through, does that?
Okay.
Yeah, that all goes through the Fair Board Fund.
Anything that we do for the fair goes through the four-H Council, which is not, which is totally separate than county money here, that's totally separate here.
Perfect, thanks, Craig.
Yeah.
Rick, any questions?
I just had one, was, uh, one was, uh, education training, uh, was that a thousand dollars, I was wondering, a thousand off the, or is N D S U carried some of that, and. Soil conservation and those types of things, for the government, do you think they carry that?
Educational and training, um, Soil Conservation has their money to do that, they, for part of it, for their half. They have their funds for that. And for us, this is something that we've been doing new, we've only done this two years, so. That's where I've been taking some of that educational money out of it, but I upped it five hundred dollars, so we could do some more programming for recognition. To recognize people like that in that, in that educational training area, so that went from five hundred dollars, I upped it five hundred dollars this year to a thousand. To put five hundred dollars in the budget for that. Um, N D S, N D S U, N D S U doesn't kick any, any, N D S U doesn't kick anything in for that, no.
Okay.
Any other questions, Rick?
No, I probably got a question.
Jean?
No.
Lisa?
Nope.
Jamie?
Nope.
I'm good, thanks, Craig.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you need this back, Carmen?
Nope, it's yours, thank you.
Um, I'm just gonna go what we have it listed here, so next up is Clerk of Courts. Everybody that just came in, we just haven't, whosoever budgeted, just kinda give us any major changes, updates, and then if we got any questions, we've been asking those. So.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, I, I haven't changed anything on my budget as far as, um, requests. Everything's pretty much the same, and the other thing that I have is hiring extra help. In our office, 'cause Donna's now retired.
I was like, is Donna left, right?
Right. Right, so, and I'm currently looking at hiring somebody that can work. Twenty-four hours a week. Um, it would be average of ninety-six to a hundred hours per month. And, um, I don't know what I'm gonna advertise for the position, I haven't decided that yet, but. I'm guesstimating that I would start off that person at twenty dollars an hour.
Okay, and that would be under our other salaries, Carmen, right?
Right.
Okay.
Under deputy salaries.
So you have a deputy, or you don't have a deputy?
I just have Kathy.
Kathy, okay.
She's not even placed on yet. And then, we get twelve thousand dollars a month, around twelve thousand dollars a month for, for our services, our judicial services from the state of North Dakota. So, just wanted to remind you of that.
And, um, you'll have to refresh me, did, did the state take all Clerk of Courts, or how did that, how did that shake out? I know that was talked about.
It got defeated.
It got defeated, so what we've been doing is the way it's gonna continue?
Right now, yeah.
Okay.
We're under contract right now.
Okay.
And before you, did you have some of Donna's salaries and your other salaries before?
I had it under the deputy salaries.
How many hours did Donna work then? About?
Less than twenty-four hours a, a week.
So when you calculated that, how many hours per year did you think you calculated for that?
For Donna's position?
Yeah.
I think I had six hundred.
Six hundred per year, okay, thank you.
Previously, right?
Right, right. But we need to hire somebody that can gradually learn the deputy's position. 'Cause I'll be retiring sometime down the road, and we'll need to have that person trained in criminal and civil, um, aspects, so. Yeah.
Is there anything in education or training that would have to be increased then, if, if we're gonna bring somebody new in, that's line nine twenty?
No, I don't think so, because we have a lot of our stuff on, training on, online.
Okay.
And it's not over cost.
Right.
Okay.
And it's provided by the state of North Dakota, so that's, that's good.
That's helpful, okay.
Yeah, you don't have to send anybody down to business for training, because it's there on, on, on.
And if, if we're only twenty-four hours a week, then we don't have benefits? Or do we need benefits?
I gotta figure that one out, yeah, I, I believe you have to be more than seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
I think it's thirty hours.
Thirty or thirty-two.
I thought it was thirty or thirty-two, but I wasn't sure, and I just wanted to make sure.
I believe it's, yes. One is thirty and one is thirty-two, like, like insurance is something.
Do you want me to go get Steve Glenn's here?
Just ask her what, uh, part, the cutoff is, whether they get benefits.
When is our contract with the state?
I think. When is that?
When is our contract with the state?
I think it's up.
Next.
Not next year, but the following year.
So in twenty-five?
Three years?
We just re-upped it last year.
Okay, that's three years, right?
I think it's for the years twenty-four and twenty-five. Twenty-five, I'm not sure.
Okay, it doesn't matter at this point, I can, I have it, I have to dig it all. But as organized as that pile is, it probably, they'll be on to the next, uh. Office before I find it, so. But I'll find it. Because that is something. That is a possible consideration also. We'll have to see what. Rick, you're pretty noisy.
I was probably hearing you guys over makeup.
All right. Yeah, that's something we're going to have to review and see what we're gonna pursue.
Okay.
Okay, twenty hours per week for health, and thirty hours per week for dental and vision. So if you work a minimum of twenty hours per week, then you just get the health, but dental vision would be added if you had thirty hours.
Okay, so she, we would need to do benefits then, at twenty-four?
Yeah. We have to offer them.
Right.
Yeah.
I heard another question, Carmen.
Yes.
On Lions.
Twelve, thirty.
Yeah, one twelve to one fourteen, I'm confused, because it says elected salaries, nothing, but then it's got a deputy at sixty, but then other salaries at sixty-six.
Okay, I believe that before. Okay, I believe that before it was an elected position.
Yeah, I had an.
And they changed, this is just the way it was in the system.
Right, right.
So you're actually considered other salary in this.
Cause I've got, I'm not an elected official.
Nope.
Okay, so that should actually be Clerk of Courts here.
So like one twelve should be eliminated off of them.
Well, it's gotta stay in for historical purposes.
Right, but like.
Okay, so, okay, so under deputy lines, is that where your salary is taken out of?
No, that would be Kathy's.
Kathy's is the only sixty, she's the, right?
Other salaries would be mine.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't know why you couldn't change that to official. Or appointed, appointed maybe.
I would say Donna's in Kathy's.
Can you, can you change that from the word other to?
Well.
Appointed or something.
In the new system we get, yes, absolutely, but I, I just use what was in the.
Would deputy salaries be Kathy's and Donna's combined?
Right, right, okay.
So where's?
One, one thirty, one is Wanda's other.
Clerk of Court salary.
Or they, or you could put official or, or appointed.
Appointed official would be appropriate.
What do you use for other appointed officials? What do you, what term do you use?
Honestly, use what's in there.
Are they others too?
So that no salaries.
For, for us.
And the deputies with Kathy's.
Donna and Kathy are deputies and Wanda's is the other.
Can we do that? It's really easy as that.
And we can't take out elected because that's, you, you, you need that for history or something?
Well, it, it's however their system was set up.
Okay.
And they haven't changed, we haven't changed it, so.
And that could change when you get a new program.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, then we go and clean everything up and get things up to date, but.
So are those?
So deputy salaries is Kathy and Donna, other is Wanda.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
That, that's our consensus.
That's what, that's what we came to.
Jamie diverted a question away when I asked, thank you.
You're reading your mind down there.
Yes, you are.
Stere, stere down there.
Okay.
We, we were just figuring out the same thing over here.
Okay.
Okay, Rick, any questions for Wanda?
No.
Jean?
No.
Liza?
Nope.
Jamie? I'm good. Thanks for coming in, Wanda.
Thank you, Wanda.
Are, are, are you staying in here the whole time, or?
Yes, my plan.
Okay, should we talk to the other ones, or do you wanna be on, on your order?
Save you for last.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Recorder's office? Anybody in here?
Oh, she wasn't gonna be able to be here.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, but there weren't, there were really no changes. It's pretty much the same as last year.
I don't see anything really changing in here. Okay, um.
That would've been for the county recorder.
Okay, uh.
It's pretty much the same.
Let's move to the state's attorney then. Morning, Todd.
Morning.
Morning, Todd.
Basically, I don't know if you heard me earlier, we just, if there's any big changes, kinda highlight those, but, um. I know there was a membership fee that was off last year, did we get that corrected this year?
Yeah, cause it was only for one month before and it needed to be for a whole year, that amount each month.
Do you remember which one that was, Todd? Uh, software, what was that?
Uh, the change that we made back earlier this year is that there was an error that had been made as to, oh.
The library, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, your library on here.
Which is kind of a misnomer, because what that is, is that's the LexisNexis. What had happened was is the period had been moved over one to the left. And basically had us covered for about one month.
Right.
And part of the next, so we corrected that already. It's my understanding that there hasn't been a reason that coming, but that wouldn't be the first time I was surprised on something like that. The two things that I wanna address, uh, are in regard to my staff. Now, you'll see that we have zero down for victim advocate. I do have a victim advocate who's also, uh, the admin. Shiloh's probably one of the most experienced victim advocates in the state. And what I would like to do is move that and the legal assistant up by five percent. In looking at averages for our victim advocate, not even taking into consideration that she does admin, uh, that would put Shiloh at the median victim advocate wage in the state. Now, there's an anomaly that kinda caught me by surprise with both legal assistants and victim advocates. Fargo's below the median. So I made a call out to a buddy of mine who practices out in Grand, in Fargo and Grand Forks. And he says, yeah, they got a glut of them out there in Fargo. So that's an anomaly. By putting those two salaries at where they would be at the median for the victim witness advocate and for the legal admin, that'll put us right about where I need it to be for retention. And God forbid that I'd have to recruit. I don't think I could get a good legal assistant in Michelle's caliber for sixty-five thousand, and when I punch the numbers out, I'm asking it be bumped up to sixty-two, seven ninety, realizing that that's not the actual salary. Those are the only two adjustments that I would like made.
Carmen, would we do partial between, um, witness advocate and admin? Or would we just have it under one?
Combine it into one?
Kinda bind it into one? This is more on your side, I mean.
Well, we got a unique situation.
Two line items. Well, right now, there is nothing in, in legal assistant. I'm assuming it's all, if she's doing that other job and it's all in her office secretary, right? Shiloh is office secretary.
What I'd ask is that we just move to victim advocate? And the job description includes administrative.
Okay.
So like take away one seventeen?
Do you just wanna add office secretary slash victim witness advocate? You want those two as one, cause basically you hired her.
Okay, here's what I'm asking, is let's move office secretary back to the zero and put for victim witness advocate, that'll match up closer with your state audits. Then I'm asking a five percent raise for both Michelle and for Shiloh.
Okay.
I'm not asking for a raise for myself, I think we've got other expenses covered. I, I will point a few of these things out, that these are guesstimations at best, such as transcript free fees. As you can see, um, the twenty-three budget was only a hundred dollars. And we've already spent five hundred and forty-four, and that's on one Supreme Court appeal, which I'm proud to announce we won. On a sex offender. So if I get a case, a couple cases that I get, three, four, that go up to the North Dakota Supreme Court, I'm gonna go over budget on transcript.
Hmm.
Historically, we haven't had a lot of appeals, they kinda come and go unexpectedly.
I am sorry, I have to apologize, but trying, trying to follow it now. The off, office secretary, you, you say that's the one you want, would say, let's do away with that and
basically one seventeen.
The victim.
Victim witness advocate.
Okay.
So one seventeen would go into one eighteen.
Yeah, they'd.
We combine one seventeen and one eighteen.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
The, the, the reason I don't know if you wanna do that, we go down a few years and Shiloh decides she doesn't wanna be here. Do you know how rare it is, you can find a victim advocate who's also an admin? So my suggestion for the budgetary reasons and for the filing of it is just put zeros in for office secretary.
Okay.
And then put the number, just take line one eighteen, those numbers, and move, or excuse me, one seventeen, and move that down to one eighteen.
Okay.
And then for my two staff, I'm asking for a five percent increase. Cause we're at preliminary budget stage and this is when these requests need to be made.
Now I follow, sorry.
Okay.
That's all right.
Now I follow, cause I was.
You folks have been sitting and looking at number sheets since
Since nine.
Long before nine o'clock, because I know you guys looked ahead before you got here.
Yeah. Okay, Rick, any questions for Todd?
I had a question with you, but I, I had a hard time to understand Todd, so I, I'm gonna have to abstain at this point because I, I just couldn't quite make it out. So I had questions about what Gina said too, about following up and, uh, uh, understanding where we're at with, you know, with the monies on there, with the wages on, for Shiloh. But, uh, I'll, I'll get, pick up on that when you get back home.
Yeah, just to simplify it, I'm requesting a five percent increase in salary for my two staff. The other item is that on the, the budget sheet that we have, it lists zero for victim witness advocate and has all of Shiloh under secretary. And just for a little more accuracy, I'm saying move the numbers from one seventeen office secretary down to one eighteen victim witness advocates, so it reflects what her duties actually are.
And you wanted to say the secretary, uh, for future, if we need to, if we, uh, if she leaves and someone else comes, we hire someone else, is that what, whatever?
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I lucked out in that hire. And yes, I've said many a prayer, thanks.
And just for the commission, is that something we can agree to that, is that a change we have to make at a meeting?
No, this could be adjusted today, just to put it in that line item. Cause we're not officially.
It really truly makes sense.
I understand that, but officially, I know we can agree to that, but do we have to document that at a meeting that?
Like have a motion for it, is that what you're asking?
To rearrange the title.
I think we just direct it and then when we approve the preliminary budget as a whole.
You're correct.
And it would be approved.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, Jean?
No.
Liza?
And then I can give the numbers that the five percent would reflect. For the victim, victim witness advocate, it would be fifty-four thousand, four hundred eighty dollars. For the, uh, legal assistant would be sixty-two thousand, seven ninety and zero cents. And that number reflects not just what the salary is, but also the county's contribution for benefit prices that are figured in there.
Okay.
That's my understanding of how these figures go, because, um, Carmen helped me out. I have an accountant who put in an extension on my taxes and then lost my W-2 form, then sat on it for three weeks. And then had somebody who had a heavy foreign accident calling from a number that I didn't recognize demanding information about my W-2. I think everybody in the room knows me well enough, though that didn't fly so well.
Okay, Liza, any other questions?
No, I just wanna make sure that it's understood that we would like to have that victim witness line reflect the actual monies for Shiloh, if you could.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, Jamie? I'm good. Okay, thanks, Todd.
All right.
If you need me for anything else, I've been in the building all day, it just buzzed me.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, tax equalization.
Next page.
Next page. It's nice when they're in order. Thank you. No. Okay.
Okay, I realize that you can't talk to me about my wages, but that top sheet that I handed you shows how much of a difference there is between all of us and our deputies. And Jen, as you can see in the blue over there, is at eleven ninety-two less than me. I'm assuming that that's because of, that it wasn't combined before the tax director and the planning and zoning. So I'm assuming that's why it was all screwed up on the wage scale. But I'm asking that you guys figure out some way to get, get her up closer to what like these other ones are. I believe I put it for five dollars less an hour than me on my budget, but, I mean, she shouldn't be that far below me when she has to be the deputy for P and Z and tax director.
And she also has a certification on, on a certified associate.
Yeah, she's certified, yeah, she's certified and she takes care of our G I S. I mean, like Kathy's only three seventy-five an hour less than Wanda, where, I mean, that's quite a bit different there. I don't know if you, you guys are gonna decide that, I was just asking that you please look at it, cause it's not cool.
And how much were you hoping for her?
Well, I had, I was thinking that she should be five dollars less an hour than me, I just kinda took an average of them.
Okay.
And then as far as that, um, Vanguard goes, as you can see, that's, it came up quite a bit higher than what they had told me before because of the power plants. They're gonna charge way more for them, which I guess they're, I mean, it's gonna be a lot to assess those for Vanguard to assess those power plants. So, and the way it looks in the contract, we have to start making payments as soon as we would sign the contract, we have to start making payments.
What are the payments?
It doesn't say.
It doesn't say. I think we'd have to get clarification on that.
Yeah.
Cause it just says.
Monthly payment.
Monthly payment, but it doesn't break it out, so.
Cause right now, I put a hundred thousand to put aside, oh, I put a hundred thousand in for this Vanguard.
I know, it, and you were gonna do that every year for, but now that, now they moved the, um, completion date up to till February first of twenty twenty-six instead of twenty twenty-nine, so.
Okay.
That'll be nice to get the work done faster and that, but that means your timeline is shorter for getting.
But you gave me that quote of four hundred sixty some thousand, so. And it's twenty-four next year, this is for twenty-four, twenty-five, wow, you know, we need to find out what kind of payments we need.
Yeah, I don't know if we're supposed to figure it out, cause it says that you hold back ten percent.
That's final retainage, basically, until it's, yeah, I mean. Yeah, they don't give a very good payment schedule.
No.
It's like the worst payment schedule I've ever had, but.
Yeah, that, that's not my payment.
Yeah, anyway, I mean, it's not something we'll decide today, but it probably should be on the agenda.
But it is on the agenda.
Okay, for, for next Wednesday? So, your software and services, that's budgeted for Vanguard if we approve.
Well, and I already have, I already had, always had the eighteen thousand in there, but that's because I have to get hours of service for what we already have.
Right. What I was saying was that Carmen put a hundred thousand.
The rest of the county.
But it includes the county.
Oh, yeah, they're equitable across the county, that is what this is gonna do.
Right, that's the Vanguard, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right, cause right now we don't have Pick City and we don't have Golden Valley on there or the rest of the rural only leak. So this quote is to get the rest of them on there. So we're not working with two different systems and everybody's assessed the same way and we really need to do that, it's important.
And that's why it jumped up so much for software and services.
Right.
Correct.
To include, to include this, yeah, to get the whole county on, where it's not really fair to the rest of the county that's on it.
Yeah. Plus it.
Plus it'll make your job easier, right, Cindy?
Yeah, it's not fun trying to do sales or issuing two different systems.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Hmm, let's see. Rick, any questions? Jean?
No.
Liza? Come back to you?
No.
Okay.
No, I was just looking at publications and subscriptions, but I think that went up because of the zoning, right?
Well, that went up because of, um, my dues went up for my association. Oh, publications.
Yeah.
I don't know why that would go up, or subscrib-, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I see that now.
Sorry, I got confused.
Was it supposed to be fifty instead of five?
Uh, that probably should have been under registration fees or something.
Oh, is it fifty? Okay, so why, now, thirty?
Well, I don't have any subscriptions only to the newspaper, so I don't know if that was supposed to be meant for
It's probably supposed to go to fifty.
I think your, maybe your registration fees were supposed to go to fifty and that was supposed to stay at thirty?
Probably.
Is that maybe?
Three seventy-four and three seventy-five should be forty? But it's maybe.
But only fifty instead of five hundred?
Well, are your registration fees anything? Do you have registration?
I actually went down on my registration fees to two hundred on my sheet.
Yeah.
See, we don't have anything other than a thirty.
So I see that for membership and license, is that right?
Membership and license is two hundred.
Right, I got that at two hundred.
And then I did, I did that because my, um, association fees went up.
Yep, and then underneath it, it has registration fees of thirty, but then underneath that, for publications, it says five hundred.
Oh, see, I have, oh, on mine, it's registration fees are zero, publications are thirty, and office supplies are five hundred. That's for my office.
Oh.
So we're off, all off.
Yep.
All needs to be on the line.
We have office supplies now.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yep.
Well, I guess I don't have to do it, because I don't have to do any work.
Yep, okay, so
Okay.
Four eleven should be five hundred, three seventy-six should be thirty.
Right.
And three seventy-five should be zero?
Yeah, zero, and then three, um, the one above that, I went down a hundred.
Three seventy-four should be two hundred.
Okay, you see that?
Correct, yep.
Okay, three seventy-four should
Zero, thirty, five hundred.
Yeah.
Three seventy-four.
Yep.
Two hundred, zero, thirty.
The next line down, zero.
Yep, and always has been zero, and then
Next line down.
Thirty.
And then five hundred is my office supplies.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Liza, anything else?
No, that was my only question.
Jamie?
I am good.
Good, you got that, thank you for catching that.
That's a good catch.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thanks, Cindy.
Okay, um, I see we got, um, Casey and Mark here. Let's talk water resource board.
Okay, so those are gonna be in these smaller ones. These ones I put up on top, and, uh, yeah, they're not in any OCL water resources. And then I, I, I made a copy of mine of what this sounds.
Okay. It's gonna take me a minute. It's, uh, a stack of little staple guns.
Not in here, is it? Nope, this pile is not even, that's Jean's pile, I guess. Are we talking in here?
Doesn't have a zip code yet.
No, I have to be careful. But this. Here it is. This is what they sent in, is the back page.
Thank you, Carmen. You guys wait till you turn sixty-five.
I'll be happy if I make it to sixty-five, okay?
Uh, I'm just gonna leave that one alone.
I am, I am ready.
Okay, you're ready? All right.
All right.
Mark?
Good morning. Good morning.
So I, I think it's our last page is what Water Resource Board, um, submitted. And what was your overall?
So our overall budget that we're requesting this year is a hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars. That's a decrease of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred from the prior year. Um, the big thing on that decrease is we're expecting to wrap up, um, the lazy age and make sure developments, um, that base and that, it's a closed base, and that we're trying to provide some relief for some of the flood control measures and stuff out there. Um, so we decreased that at forty thousand dollars, but we had a few increases this past year, um, probably most notably, um, Goodman Creek Nine Townships. That's part of our partnership with the Soil Conservation District to provide, um, meaningful projects and things like that as a cost share with the Soil Conservation Districts for area farmers and ranchers to improve their water quality. Um, that's, we bumped up from five thousand to ten thousand. As, I look back as far as our records were and that number had stayed constant since back to nineteen ninety-nine, and that was as far back as I can look at our records, and five thousand dollars just doesn't go as far as it did back in nineteen ninety-nine, so it seemed like that was an appropriate increase. Uh, a couple of the other ones that I wanted to draw your guys' attention to was, um, one of the things that, as a board, I think that they wanted to try to address in the future more so and to try to stay on top of is knife river flood control and monitoring, specifically with this last year of flooding, um, we decided as a board to, um, send out a drone to get some aerial photography of what the Missouri, or what the Knife River looks like at its peak, and also to document that as to now that the waters have receded, what that looks like so that we can get an indication as to what there is for concerns as to how that erosion and things like that may have impacted, um, the possi-, possible infrastructure in the county so that we can report that back to the county as there's a need for any type of projects for future erosion control on the river to protect infrastructure, and at least to put the county on notice as to things like that, because what we don't want to see happen is a situation like what we had here about three, four years ago with the Stanton Bridge project, where we kind of all got caught off guard on that, and then we're asking for money that wasn't necessarily budgeted for. And so I think this is kind of some preventative maintenance in that respect. The other one that I would maybe draw your attention to that, um, is still the same amount, dollar amount, but at the time I may be represented that we thought that this is gonna be more of a short-term deal, was the Missouri River advocacy. Um, there's really two components to that one, um, historically that we've spent some significant money on. Um, first and foremost is there's been an increased effort in the state to, um, work on perfecting our water rights on the Missouri River as part of the original agreements. Um, when Lake Secocalia came to be, is that we had certain water rights that needed to be perfected to guarantee our ability to do so. Um, the hope was at the time that the legislature was gonna take a little bit more of a leadership role on that. Um, instead, they've kind of left it up to the individual, um, counties and organizations that want to take, uh, a leading role in that, so I think that that's gonna be an ongoing need for those funds. And then the other portion of that is dealing with aquatic nuisance species and things like that. Um, we've provided some additional money for some funding to help educate the public. Um, I think that one of our greatest resources is the Missouri River, both the actual river and Lake Secocalia, and so providing those types of resources, I think, is an important thing. Um, and so with that, a lot of the other expenses stayed pretty constant, uh, when we look at that. Um, our investment income, we've got most of our investment income tied up into CDs and things like that. We're kind of on the back end of some really low interest rate earning CDs, but we're starting to get some higher interest rate CDs, so we're anticipating to have made about three thousand dollars on that. That brings us to a total budget request of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars um, from there, and, um, with that, um, that's pretty much sums up our budget request.
And on that sheet, I actually punched in those numbers, and we've got the right valuation on that sheet.
So this reflects their decrease?
It reflects exactly what it's saying.
Then what's the cash reserve note?
The cash reserve estimated would be, once, next year would be that forty-eight thousand, nine fifty-nine eighty-six, but as of January first of this year, their cash reserve was forty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety cents.
But that cash reserve would be in?
That's just in our account.
It's in the account, that's not factored into the?
Fund twenty-nine oh seven. It is factored in, in the mill, because as you see on here, it's either asking for one thirty-one, five twenty-five, and this is the estimated cash balance, and then we're only gonna mill for a hundred and six thousand, two hundred and seven.
Oh, I got you.
Gotcha.
Okay. Yep.
So it's only comes to one point nine six.
Last year was two point seven eight.
Yeah. Yeah, it was just under two eight last year.
Okay.
Do you, and I know I usually go to you guys' boards, but, and I know I've asked it a few times, do you envision any major projects coming in twenty-four?
Well, the, the only major projects that I could see us having, and, and maybe Casey's got a little bit different thought on that, is if when we're doing these aerial surveys, is if there is something of critical need in infrastructure. We don't have those, those aerial surveys back yet. Um, I think that we've got sufficient money and reserves that we could cover a lot of different problems and headaches if that, if something were to appear that we're not aware of. Um, but that's the big one that I think that with the flooding that we had this spring, that is kind of an unknown right now, is trying to gather the data on that, get a good look at what the water did, um, in the area communities and just outside of the communities, see what the impact potentially is on infrastructure, um, so that we can provide that information back to, whether that comes back to a Water Resource Board project, or a road project, or any other type of project. I think we first would have to identify the potential infrastructure that could be impacted by that, but I'm hoping that we'll have some of that result, some of those types of results here, I'll say in the nearish future, within the next sixty days or so, that we should start getting some of that drone photography and stuff like that back.
Well, I know the one that we've talked about several times is the, uh, Stutzman, is it Stutzman Bridge or the Stevenson?
Stevenson, yeah.
Yeah. I know that's got, has had some erosion concerns and issues over the last couple of years. If a project came out of that, you'd be
That gets a little trickier because it's actually a historical one.
I was gonna say it's a historic.
Well, we wouldn't change the, the bridge itself, but it's the
Protecting it.
Protecting the, the embankments on either side.
And, and right now, we don't have any of the information yet. I think we're at least two years out before we can even start a project on that, because with, at least with Stanton, we first, when we dealt with that Stanton Bridge project, the very first thing we did was identify the problem, then we had to do, uh, have an engineer, um, come out and come put together a plan for that, and with that, then we then had to apply for cost share with the state. State had to approve the cost share, and then we could get it out for bid, and that process took us approximately two years, start to finish. And one, from the date that we finally, when we recognized the problem, to when we were able to get a contractor out there, so even if we were to identify, unless it was absolutely critical, um, I would say that realistically, we're at least a year out, if not two years, from start to finish on, on a project like that. So that, at that time, we would probably be coming back to you guys.
So twenty-five might be the budget cycle for that one, okay?
We've been there with the Knife River flood control. Actually, in the past, we've budgeted more money for that and have not used that money.
Okay.
We have money in reserves for a reasonable project.
Okay. Liza's got a question. I don't know if you can answer it or not, but she's gonna pose it.
Can or not, but the house or the place located by the Beulah Airport that had redone some other route of the river, is there any?
Update or, you can talk about?
I don't know if you can or not, so.
A little more update, um, you know, and, and this is, I'll say, a continuing update. Um, I do know that there's been some ongoing issues with Corps of Engineers where they've been looking at it. They've kind of said that, hey, that's their ballpark and they'll take care of it. They have been providing us with a lot of updates, but in saying that, the Water Resource Board was a little bit concerned about what that area was gonna look like, whether there is proper soil compaction or whether it's all gonna be eroded back out of there. That is one of the areas that we both flew a drone over during the flooding, and it's another area that we will continue to monitor after the fact, so that we have a better sense as to the scope of the problem, and if it's, if it looks like there is abnormally high amounts of erosion, that is something that I believe that we would send on to the Corps of Engineers in a report that would indicate, hey, this needs to be dealt with for everybody down the street.
So to answer your question, it's being investigated, but.
And you're not, and you're not getting the answers that we're necessarily looking for.
The Corps works rather slowly.
Yes.
Yep. Um, I know we've had the Zap Erosion Flood Control Analysis. Is there any progress on that, or is that just kind of waiting on the Corps too, or?
So the Corps did their study on that to see what that cost benefit was, and at this time, the information that we received back is that there wasn't enough cost to benefit to where they could, it would qualify as a federally supported project. Um, and in visiting with the community is that, I don't know if they've got the financial wherewithal to support a project like what was being spoke of, so I think that after this budget cycle, that line item's probably gonna be taken off.
Okay.
I just always like to have a zero on there before we take it off completely, just for that reason, so you guys can ask some questions.
And I know Beulah's, um, seeking, um, FEMA dollars for a flood study of the entire town. Um, that's probably not really budgeted for, but that could have some cost sharing,
Yes.
either through the Water Resource Board or through the county possibly.
Historically, we've requested some significant funds for just those types of things, and so we will, I think we would have some funds available that we have not previously spent based upon what we're requested for past studies and things like that with that section, what was it, twenty-one or thirty-one?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two study, excuse me. Um, we are pretty diligent on making sure we have funds available to help address those areas.
Okay.
Just from my understanding, so the Corps kind of takes over the bridges that are over the knife? Instead of like DOT monitoring the bridges? Like Stevens Bridge and stuff like that? How's it different? How's it?
It depends.
It depends.
That's a little question. Where we typically will get involved is if there's some kind of a maintenance easement on the actual riverbank, so if there's actual things that need to be done with the riverbank, that's where the Water Resource Board has historically gotten involved, where the, um, road department, they would be responsible for any actual work done to the bridge itself.
Okay.
And so what we would be looking at in that situation, when, especially with the drone flights, is, is there areas of high erosion that are impacting the stability of the bridge? And if there is something like that, that would be an area that we'd be looking at doing some repairs to the riverbank and then stabilizing that riverbank, just like what we did in, at the, with the Stanton Bridge. That we have to project.
And then if it's like a private road, that DOT doesn't participate in that.
Correct.
Um, so, yeah, the, the best explanation is it depends. It's not a click to
Why would it be any different?
So, okay. Rick, any questions?
No.
Jean?
No.
Liza?
No.
Jamie? We're good?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. I know we're kind of jumping around.
We got Steve here from the airport.
Steve's here from airport?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
That's in the others, airport.
Air veteran services, Steve's in here.
Yep, we'll do, we'll bring Steve up.
It's one of the longer of the four teams. I'll be in the back. Hey, Steve.
Morning.
Morning.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Steve Frobar from Clark County Regional Airport. Uh, we submitted our budget here to Carmen. I guess, uh, just quick rundown, I better get my glasses on so I can see. Uh, this budget is pretty much a normal one again. Uh, last year, our revenue and expenses was at two hundred and twenty thousand. This year, it's at three hundred and forty-three. The reason for the, that increase is you look under line six under expenses, you see engineering fees, almost a hundred and fifty thousand. What we're going through this year, next year, and we'll get finalized in twenty, uh, six, it, it's called an airport layout plan, and it's And it's, uh, it's a bunch of maps and it's a textbook, too. It has the goals for the airport, which can be, uh, a couple of things that are down the road would be a parallel taxiway, a grass crosswind runway. And those things have to be showing on the ALP or the FAA won't fund it. So, it's kind of a long range. They're done about every five to ten years. Our last one was done about ten years ago, so it's time to do it again. And like I say, that has to be on there. So, that's, uh, the big difference between our budget last year and this year. And then, uh, you may recall, in twenty-twenty-one, we had a major project out there where they tore up the old runway completely and put a new runway down, new lights. Uh, and they, at the taxiways and the aprons at both the north end and, and, uh, mid runway, one was, uh, a mill and overlay on that. And that was close to a three million dollar project that we had. That's about all I have on that. I guess unless you have any questions about any of our items or anything, I'd be happy to answer those.
You guys don't get any revenue from cities, do you? Like, as far as like Hazen or anybody that's next to you?
Well, we, the mill levy is applied to every way in the county except Beulah.
Okay.
Because Beulah didn't join the Airport Authority. They had their own airport. So, Beulah has a mill levy, as does, everybody in the county has a levy, it's just where that money goes. When Beulah goes, only to Beulah, the county comes back to the Airport.
Okay.
Board. And I guess just with that, it was in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, our mill levy increase, you can see under line twenty-three, is now it's a hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars. At that time, I think it was a hundred and twelve thousand, and the county asked to reduce it. So, from twenty-twenty-one onward, all we've asked for is this one hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars. So, it's just, it started out about two mills and because of increased evaluations, why it's dropped down now to where it's about one point nine mills, I think, is what it was last year.
Okay. I don't know if I necessarily agree with Beulah not paying, but I wasn't part of that decision. That's why I asked, I wasn't sure, because I'm familiar with Beulah's, how they have a mill levy and I wasn't sure if any other airports did, or any other cities did similar. But if the county does, taxes everybody for the regional one, then?
Right, yeah, it's only, it's, yeah, you can only do one or the other. You can either have one for the city or in this case, a regional one. And Mercer County isn't the only one, there's a couple of other counties out there that are a little bit different like that, too, where there's some cities only have a levy and other ones where there's a county one and some individual city ones, kind of like a library one, you know?
Okay. Do you guys do your own fuel sales out there? Okay.
Partly, yeah, we do.
Do you do your own fuel sales, so?
And that's real guessing game, I tell you, the way prices go.
Rick, you got any questions? Airport? Jean? Liza? Jamie? Well, you answered the ones I had, so.
Okay, just one other thing, or the board will fire me. Please consider, and you're doing your budget, please consider paving that road out to the airport.
That's on our list.
That's on our list, yeah.
All right, get on an E-Way, Al.
Yeah, it's on the list.
It's on the list.
All right, great.
For this coming year.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, have a great day.
Thanks to you.
Thanks, Steve.
Oh, all righty. So, that's just a part of the other. Do we wanna cover treasure and then we'll take a little break?
Might as well. We have a treasure here, so.
Yep.
Can I do it from here, or do it all over?
You can do it from there.
Okay. Okay, um.
Here's.
Hold on one second.
Okay, that's pages. Back to the original page.
Yeah.
Yep.
No, that's mine. This is the auditors. This is what I've been waiting for. Yeah, I think it's right here.
We should all have screens and then you just throw the right one out.
I got the treasure finally.
All right.
Okay, nothing on mine really changed. Um, I upped telephone a little bit, but we're talking about going to voice over internet, so that may be comfortable. Um, my membership license and fees I upped because, um, my dues are going back up to the county and Alice is a notary, so she's got membership dues for that that I, um, pick up for her. Um, publications and subscriptions, I never know what to do with the papers, so I upped that a little bit. My big one was office supplies. Um, I contracted for twenty-four thousand copies. Um, in my copyright, I have to pay for everything over that and I was pretty much at my twenty-four thousand by the time we were done with tax season in February because I had no idea how many receipts we printed out and how many, I mean, I knew we sent out ten thousand statements. So, I upped that a little bit. I don't expect that I will use that for whole four hundred, but not knowing, because I'm not to the end of my contract yet this year, I just play it safe and wrap it in there. And my education was trained to up a little bit just because Alice has been going to some of the conferences and stuff with me and she has to pay, most of them are covered for me, but they're not for any additional people, so.
So, her notary expires next year?
I have no idea, but I paid for it this year and I never know, how long are they?
Four years.
Oh, okay, well, then I guess I can have to worry about that one, but.
Yeah.
Is the clerical, is that like Catholic?
That's Catholic.
Catholics?
Yeah. And Mary Zelda news, all that, but she's very good welcoming. Whenever I ask her, she's covered for other offices in here, so.
Yeah, she's been a great customer.
We did not wanna lose her.
So, treasures office doesn't spend a lot, they just collect a lot?
Yeah.
I'm trying.
The market official.
The?
How come?
Okay, I think you.
How's your treasure?
Okay, here's the treasure.
Why is this?
Oh, Darby.
Well, here's what happened, when you guys hired me last year to be an appointed person, you hired me at sixty-five.
Okay.
And I didn't really feel if you guys hired me at that, if I really had the right to come in after I got officially took over as an elected official, if I really had the right to come in and ask because it was some shorter time later. So, I didn't come in and ask for a raise. But Darby was getting paid sixty-nine when I left.
Okay.
Or when I took over, so.
What is your salary today?
It's sixty-six-five.
Okay. That should be it. Here. So, this is here, this is the total, the total projects? Yeah, this would be the total budget for that department.
Yep, and then, so this includes the salaries and the dollars.
Well, that's their, her entire budget, right?
Right, with the salary.
With everything.
See, right now, this is just her, other than salaries, it's about seven thousand, two hundred, right? And, and when they're requested, I just put that in there, just, uh, here's what you're looking at. And then I added the dollars just so you could see that in that final book, just.
This number includes that?
Yes, along with salaries, benefits, with a dollar rate.
Yep, yep, I got you.
So, where does postage go to?
Postage is in, uh, auditors general, yes.
Okay.
I know you're excited, you can't wait.
Well, no, no, I was just like, I'm like, you, you send out so many statements, how come you don't have postage?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's one of those things where I send them out, but it's like the envelopes. It's for the better of the county that I send those out, so like the envelopes and the postage come out of the entire county budget rather than.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's just, somebody's gotta pay the postage.
You are correct.
And, tell you what, if you don't send a bill, you're not gonna get paid.
You are correct. I like that line.
Okay, any, any questions, Rick, on treasure's budget?
No.
Jean?
No.
Liza?
No.
Jamie?
No.
I don't have any either. All right. Do we wanna take a recess or?
Were you here for a budget?
Uh, no, I'm a, I'm a reporter in town and I'm just gonna try to catch all of them. You're a great, you have a lot of, so, I'm not.
Okay. I'm related to the budget, okay.
Yeah?
Then let's, uh, break for some, some food.
Okay, I'll hold to.
Um.
Now you might wanna.
Cause honestly, I think.
Now you might wanna.
Pause.
Pause or stop.
We're gonna do fifteen minutes?
Did you get that?
We're just gonna go get.
Well, we'll pause it, but we'll probably take like fifteen minutes.